Good morning. At this time, we'll call to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, September 1. Will the Clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Here. All our present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would appreciate if you turn it off or silent mode, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. I'll make this Nassau is not the only one that has issues with technicalities and technology. We do this morning, and I'm going to ask Mr. Waters to explain.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners and audience. We have had some network blips in the course of the last forty-five minutes or so here in the building. Hopefully, we've got that stabilized. But if that happens, then we lose our connection to the outside world, so our webcast as well as our on-base system. We are recording by separate system all of the audio in the room, so in the event that happens, we will have that record.
Okay, all right, thank you. We do have a couple of presentations to make this morning. We have a proclamation this morning recognizing the 50th anniversary of Johnson County Developmental Supports. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Chad Van Onen, who's Director of JCDS, to introduce some other guests with him and make some comments. Chad, hard to believe, fifty years of Johnson County Developmental Supports and all the great programs that you've provided for our community who has intellectual developmental disabilities. So, we're pleased to recognize that fifty years.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Van Onen with Johnson County Developmental Supports. As the Chairman mentioned, we have a few Board members here this morning. We have Mike Hughes, Debbie Scott-Williams, and then also our Deputy Director, Shelley May. And I would like to turn it over to our Chairman of our JCDS Board, Rick Marion.
Good morning, Commissioners. As current Chairperson of the Governing Board of Johnson County Community College, thank you for your service, for your support and trust in the staff and volunteers at JCDS, who work very hard, twenty-four-seven, in support of the IDD community here in Johnson County. On behalf of the Governing Board, some of whom are here, of course, we thank you, and each of us have been appointed by one of you, of course. We thank you for the privilege and the honor of serving on the Governing Board. Again, thank you for this honor. We at JCDS are very lucky and very helpful and very thankful for your recognition of us. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm not the actual historian for this activity, but in the early seventies, I was involved in a group called the Association for Retarded Children. It was a parents' group who was working on programs for those who had those disabilities. And there was a group of parents in that program who came to the county, asked for early assistance, and that was granted for the workshop, I believe it was. And so, my son, who has those disabilities, was in a program in Topeka at the, at a center there, and so I was not actively involved in the activities fifty years ago. But it's been significantly important to our community, and so thank you very much. Thank the Board, all the volunteers who have supported JCDS over the past fifty years and going forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll present that. Let's get the Board members up here. Thank you for being here, guys. Dill, open up the proclamation. You can. It'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. And now, I'm going to ask Mr. Tim DeWes to join me at the podium. I have a proclamation declaring National Suicide Month, supporting that effort. So, Tim, I'll present that proclamation to you or your guests here.
Yes, yep.
Okay, all right. You have some introductions to make.
Thank you. Again, my name's Tim DeWes with Johnson County Mental Health Center, and I want to thank the Board for this proclamation. Several years ago, I appeared before this Board talking about suicide and sharing that suicide was not just a mental health problem, a mental health center problem, but that it was a community issue and that it would take a community response. And so today, I've asked Sylvia and Nathan Harrell to come and share their story and a little bit about themselves, because they are central to how the community has come together and has sent this message of hope, in particular to young people within our community, to reduce the number of suicides. So, with that, Nathan, Sylvia?
All right. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Now, first, thank you for allowing us to join you today and for your support. I'm a true believer that you can't solve a problem until you admit that you have one. And I believe that this proclamation is absolutely representative of probably the single most important component of this mission to prevent suicide. When you bring the topics of suicide and mental health into the light, it lets people know that it's okay not to be okay, and it gives them an opportunity to feel more comfortable asking for help. So, we thank you for that. I'm Nathan Harrell, and this is my wife Sylvia. In June of two thousand seventeen, our world was shattered when our seventeen-year-old son Chad made the decision to take his own life. We made a conscious decision at that point to try to do something about that and try to make something good come out of our son's death. There were kind of two options there. First one was actually kind of attractive. We were thinking about digging a great big hole and just never coming out, but we knew that we had to do something about this. So, we formed the Keep the Spark Alive Foundation, and the mission of our foundation really is three tenants. We want to prevent suicide. We want to support those that are left behind, which I think is a missing component, and we want to honor the life of our son. It has certainly been a hard last five years, as we've learned to live without the joy and the laughter that was our son, while also trying to find a way to keep even one more family from having to live through the nightmare of losing a child to suicide. But I will tell you that because of the tireless efforts of this community, we actually are stemming the tide of suicide in Johnson County. People are having tough and sometimes uncomfortable decisions and conversations about mental health. And after a thirty percent, a twenty percent reduction in teen suicide in twenty nineteen in Johnson County, and then a thirty-three percent reduction in twenty twenty, the teen suicide rate in Johnson County has not gone back up. And all of this in the midst of a pandemic, when frankly, the mental health of our children has been challenged like at no other time in our history. In my mind, this is nothing short of amazing, and we are so happy to see the progress. And it's because of civic leaders, mental health officials, schools and churches, as well as students and families, have all linked their arms to fight this epidemic head-on. I hope you guys are familiar with a program called Zero Reasons Why. It's a student-led campaign in Johnson County that has spearheaded efforts in our community to try to help break the stigma and the silence. And there are other family foundations like ours. Speak Up, For the Kids, Nick's Voice, Shifting Gears for Reagan, Carl's Cause, and Change for Connor, and we've all partnered with Johnson County Mental Health, other mental health organizations and school districts to provide resources and funding for programs that are absolutely saving lives. We've implemented effective, evidence-based programs in seventy-two schools in Johnson County. You know, a great source of pride for us is when we hear Tim talk about how he's never seen a more unified effort from different family foundations to implement real change. Our foundations don't compete, we collaborate. And I think the reason for that is every one of those foundations that I listed were formed by parents who had lost a child to suicide. Like, we all know, this is way too important not to work together. So, Tim, thank you. We couldn't do this without you. We've also developed our own program, which is called Give Me Twenty, after we learned the startling statistic that a large percentage of teens who attempt suicide do so after only having thought about it for twenty minutes or less. It's a very impulsive decision. Think about that for a second, twenty minutes to decide to end your life. So, the Give Me Twenty program works on the premise that if a teen can make the decision to end their life in twenty minutes, couldn't they use that same twenty minutes to decide to live their life? The workshop gives them tools to get through twenty minutes of darkness and has been delivered to over seven thousand kids in our community, and it resonates with both kids and adults alike. We do want to recognize the Leadership Overland Park class of two thousand twenty-two this year. They raised funds as their class project to support this important work that we're doing with that program. You know, Blue Valley Superintendent Tanya Merrigan spoke at our golf tournament fundraiser this year, and we were just at the Blue Valley Community Breakfast this morning where she reiterated this thought. And she announced for our crowd that during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, for the first time in eight years, Blue Valley did not lose a single student to suicide. These programs and the support from this community are absolutely saving lives. You know, they say it takes a village. Well, this proclamation supports our village, and from the bottoms of our hearts, we thank you.
Well, on behalf of the community, I want to say a special thank you to you for the excellent work that you're doing, as well as those many others who are engaged in providing information and programs for the youth of our community in this effort of prevention. So, thank you very much. And that really doesn't, I think, say enough about the good work that you're doing. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Again, a big thank you to those who were here this morning representing important programs that are part of our community. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. For those speakers, whether virtual or in person this morning, your comments need to be limited to two minutes. If you go beyond those comment periods, then the Chair will be forced to intervene and ask you to conclude your comments. So, with that, we do have some virtual commentators this morning. The Clerk will call the names.
Thank you. We have Frank Moley. Frank, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Frank Moley, unincorporated, Johnson County. I'd like to start my comments by saying, as a very tax-averse member of this community, both of these groups, both mental health and those with special needs, are very valid uses of our tax dollars, and we should continue to support those one hundred percent. I also like to take a moment to thank the Sheriff for increasing patrols on one hundred and ninety-ninth Street. It is being noticed by the citizens. This committee last week, both from the bureaucrats and from the Commissioners, I don't understand how deception by a citizen is a criminal offense when dealing with the Sheriff, but deception by bureaucrats and by Commissioners is acceptable. We had a Commissioner last week that spoke openly that that person had spent over two hours on my property, and I would be happy to prove to the Sheriff that that is knowledge, both because I work from home, my wife works from home, and the fact that we have controls on places to know when someone steps foot on our property. That Commissioner openly said that she spent two hours on my property, which is an outright lie and unacceptable, and she should be reprimanded for that lie made to the public. I also don't understand how bureaucrats can lie and go against the documentation of the county and not be held liable for that lie. How do we have people in bureaucratic positions or Commissioners that are not honest with the public, the people that they are supposed to represent and that pay their salaries? I expect the Board to take action on this lying behavior, although I have little doubt that it will happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I must speak to that. There will be clarification of that comment later in our meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Moley. Next speaker.
Now, we have Cassie Woolworth. Cassie Woolworth.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning, Kathy. We're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, goodness. Okay, let me see if I can do this.
Thank you.
Is this better? Can you hear me here?
Yes, yes, it is better.
Thank you. Okay, hi. My name is Cassie Woolworth. I live at three oh six North Pinion, Olathe, Kansas. I've been here before. First and foremost, yes, I agree with Moley on the fact that we should fund mental health services, suicide prevention. Thank you all very much. I just want to point that out. I also want to say that politicians lying has never, ever been a reason they would be let go. We've seen that consistently in the GOP. Today, I am here to talk about the constitutional amendments. Surprise! There's two of them that loom, and there was a very nice piece by Claire Wirestone in the Kansas Reflector that gives you some details on it. There are two amendments to the Constitution, and I want to make sure you're all aware they will be on the November eighth ballot. The first one is to give the Governor no power. It gives the Legislature power, but the first one is to allow the Republican legislation to veto any of the Governor's vetoes. And they can do that just by a majority vote, and we know that they have the majority. So, the reason it's on the ballot is because she vetoed some transgender bills that they are very angry about, and she vetoed abortion amendments. And so, you know, they want to make sure they can veto her vetoes. The second one is the Sheriff's Amendment, which I spoke about last week, and I want to make sure that you all are aware. The issue gained traction in the Legislature because of the Johnson County Sheriff. We were talking about making it an appointed position instead of elected, and Sheriff Calhavin, a conservative who launched the controversial investigation into unsubstantiated claims in our election, doesn't think his election was wrong, is one of those who would like the amendment to pass. He's the one who started it. It says that sheriffs must be elected and they must be partisan, and the justice system is not partisan, and it is supposed to be blind.
Okay, I'm sorry, Cassie. That's fine. Your time is up. You know, there are differences of opinions. Nobody needs to boo. Come on. Let's be civil about it. All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Now, we have Ben Hobert. Ben Hobert.
This morning, I looked at BadBlue.com and saw a compendium, a video compendium, of people who fainted online or televised newscasts or had seizures. That was taken down shortly thereafter, but you can still find it on Rumble. Warning: Graphic Images. Global Depopulation in Full Swing as Adult Death Syndrome Skyrockets. Anybody who wants to be aware of the potential dangers of these clot shots should look at that. Safe and Effective Mantra. Here's from Open VAERS. Thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine deaths, one hundred and seventy-four thousand hospitalizations, one hundred and thirty-four thousand urgent care. That's as of August two thousand and nineteen, from Open VAERS. Here's Open VAERS. Six months to seventeen-year-olds, one hundred and forty-eight deaths, five hundred and four permanently disabled, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine myocarditis cases. Here's an individual VAERS report. A thirty-nine-year-old staff member at a clinic died within five days after getting the shots at their clinic. Here's another VAERS individual report. A fifty-six-year-old in South Dakota received the first dose of Moderna and was found deceased in her home the same day, the next day. Another VAERS individual report. Fifty-year-old Nebraska died same day as the shot. Another VAERS report. One-year-old died two days after the shot. Dolphins executive, Jason Jenkins, Jenkins, forty-seven, dies unexpectedly. Healthy, healthy individual, not overweight. Why? Cause of death not disclosed. Thirty-six-year-old mother of two, healthy, healthy. They had an autopsy, died of myocarditis. Does that sound like safe and effective to you? Dr. Cole, a pathologist in Idaho, says, "This shot was a mistake. We rolled it out on humanity as an experiment. We were told it was approved, safe and effective, and they lied to humanity."
Okay, thank you.
Now, we have Sheriff Collins. Sheriff Collins.
Just to make it clear, I asked Ed this morning why he hadn't responded to any emails on election fraud, and he said he hadn't gotten any. I've sent him about fifteen on my own. All right. Communist Subversion is a global communist strategy to undermine the United States, its allies, and its people through propaganda, destabilization, and manipulation of people's minds. Please approve Sheriff Hayden's budget request and give the officers what they deserve. They all need to be making at least a hundred thousand dollars a year. Shoot, Penny Ferguson, the county manager, is making three hundred thousand dollars a year to manipulate books. The social media coordinator is making, what, eighty-five thousand dollars a year? Our Sheriff's Department puts their lives on the line every day while you guys are ending the lives of people every day by pushing an experimental deadly jab in order to get your federal money. Jenae Hanslick continues to push for the appointment of the Sheriff and to defund the Sheriff's Department. Well, why? Because he is directly accountable to the people, not to the Commissioners or to the politicians. The Board continues to operate in a corrupt, criminal, and non-transparent way. I just found out that this guy, Mike Angliski, was appointed to county auditor and is apparently not even qualified, which breaks Kansas statutes. Cynthia Dunham ignores requests for documentation to prove his qualifications, just like she ignores the request for Scami Areola, who's the Joko Department of Health/Environment Director, who has been pushing the deadly experimental jab. He claims to be a PhD and has postured himself as an MD until people figured it out last year. We think he might possibly be a veterinarian, but for all we know, he's another George Soros plant to subvert the well-being of Johnson County citizens. We all know he's part of the World Economic Forum and a Tedros supporter. We have appointed positions in this government with great responsibility and are required to have oaths of office to uphold the Constitution of the U.S. and Kansas, and they're not even qualified. Hundreds of open records requests have been released to hundreds of, have never been released to Johnson County citizens. Why? There's no transparency. Why? We know.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Now, we have Carol Donnis. Carol Donnis.
Okay, so...
Could you please identify your address?
I gave it to you last week.
All right, so...
Okay, I live in Olathe, and if you would like to give your address, that'd be great too. I'm realizing what's going on in this county. I've been here for twenty-seven years, and I don't know why I suddenly just woke up and realized what's happening. I almost feel like leaving. I mean, like, why am I living here? I'm looking at every single one of you, and I am really upset about what the hell is going on in our county. You shake your heads. Your votes are your actions, not your words. Every one of you should be held accountable for your oath on what you pledged to do for this county and to listen to the people. You're elected by the people, are you not? And Penny, what about you? You're the one who comes up with the budget. They don't get a chance to talk about it. Why is that? You don't talk about the budget? You have to wait until the day that you're voting on the budget? Oh, is that new? Surprise, surprise. That's outrageous. You're using our tax money, Penny, and you are the one that comes up with this budget. Why are you not listening to the people that live in this county? I'd like to know that. What they're talking about with the Sheriff is just amazing. I mean, I found out that, you know, in two thousand and twenty, the federal government gave you, our county, not you personally, gave the county sixty million dollars to use for public safety, water, sewer. Huh. How come nobody heard about this? The Sheriff didn't even know about it until there was an audit done. And now, you're putting it in your general fund and you're giving part of it to the Panasonic plant? Why do they need that? They've already been given incentives to our... You need to address this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, that completes our public speakers.
Thank you very much. For the record, there are no notes for the record this morning. Ms. O'Hara.
I believe that there's one, I'm sorry. I believe there's one other person that would like to make a public comment if you would recognize her.
Well, is there someone else?
Yes.
Okay, ma'am. I would ask the speakers to, you know, our process is to sign up before, but that's fine.
The time is nine twenty.
Yes.
I apologize for that. I received a phone call that delayed me, and it's pertinent to this. Last week at...
Your name and address, please.
Maria Holiday. I live in Overland Park. Last week, Commissioner Allen Brand made a statement that she was very emotional about that all of the people on the Commission were in full support of the Sheriff's Office and that it was unfair for us to say that they weren't. But it's come to my attention this morning that my opponent, Commissioner Hanslick...
I need to, I need to intervene.
Actually contacted organizations...
Excuse me, I need to intervene. The policy is, the podium is...
This has nothing to do with my race. This has nothing to do with my race.
Excuse me, the podium and the communication system is provided by taxpayer money.
Yes. This is for taxpayers.
And it is not, it is not an appropriate...
It is not. This is not about a race.
It is not an appropriate action to speak about individual campaigns or individual...
It's not. It's not about that.
I'm sorry.
Not about that.
...to come and speak at County Commission meetings against the Sheriff's Office. This is highly inappropriate. It's unethical and maybe something more nefarious.
Again, please keep in mind, the podium is not a campaign presentation, and candidates and individuals who speak for or against candidates, it is entirely inappropriate and is a misuse of public dollars. So, are there other... Yeah, well, okay, if that's the way the morning's going to go, we'll do something. All right, go ahead. Do we have other speakers?
No, sir.
All right. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. There are no notes for the record, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the proposed consent agenda items.
Item number one, consider approving the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two business session minutes.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to have any additions or corrections?
Yes.
To the minutes. I'm talking to the minutes.
Right. I just am asking when it is appropriate to add an item for reconsideration that we made the, I'm sorry, that we moved forward... that we, that we, that, that we made the, I'm sorry, that we moved forward last week.
Okay, well, we'll take up that issue after the vote on the consent agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, excuse me, we need a motion. Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two business session meetings.
Hanslick second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Ms. O'Hara.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to make a motion to, for the Board of County Commissioners to reconsider item ten from the board's previous business meeting on August twenty-fifth, authorizing the transfer of coronavirus SLF RF funds in the amount of forty million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred to the, and it said to the countywide support funds, and then reallocation expenditures of the general reserve funds, I mean, general fund reserves for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and the amount not to exceed forty million nine thirty-six six hundred.
Good. Well, for clarification, I think the motion that was approved unanimously...
Yes.
In regards to that created the Community Services Fund for that amount of money. That was an effort to increase transparency as well as provide options for the use of that money.
Yes.
And so it would still be part of the general fund reserves...
Yes.
That would be designated.
Yes. And, and, and Chairman, the reason that I'm bringing this up is that we had an extensive conversation about this last week. And, and because we are going forward with a one point six four billion dollar budget, it's extremely, it's extremely important that, that all the commissioners understand where all of the COVID funds are, because as the budget was printed, there's sixty million in the countywide, in the budget. It states that there's approximately sixty million in the countywide support fund, and that is under expenditures rather than general funds. And I have been trying for this past week to find exactly where all of this COVID money is so that we can have a very transparent process going forward with our budget. That's, that's, that's the reason for me to ask that we reconsider this.
Okay, Ms. Faust.
Yeah, I mean, to have a reconsideration peg, you have to be on the prevailing side. And so how would we do a reconsider?
I was.
Ms., Mr. Chairman, that is correct, Commissioner Faust. It was everyone unanimously. So Commissioner O'Hara was in the majority vote. So she has the opportunity to ask this board to reconsider, but I'm not sure I heard a second for this discussion, so at this point...
Do you wish to make a motion?
Uh, yes, and it's, it's for discussion purposes so that there's clarity, so that we understand where all of the, the COVID money, and this is up to a hundred million dollars. And I have been asking all week for clarification as to where these funds are, because if the sixty million is in the countywide support funds, that's under expenditures, and it's not technically under the general fund reserves. The, the motion that we made last week, I believe that that money, it was my understanding that that forty million was going to the general fund reserves. And I just want to have clarification that that is correct and that it was not put in addition to the sixty million that is under the countywide support funds. And, and this is, this is extremely important, not just for this budget cycle, but for the next one, because if we're stacking sixty million of expenditures onto this budget from the, from the COVID funds, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult next year to not raise taxes even more. So this is, this is very critical. And like I said, I have been asking all week for clarification, the amount, because I don't know if the total amount is sixty million, and that's, that is what is in the countywide funds? And then this additional forty million went to the general fund reserves, which would then increase our general fund reserves to a hundred and ninety-seven point four million plus forty more million? So I, you know, this is a hundred million dollars running around, and I just want some clarification as to exactly where it is before we get into the budget discussions.
Well, thank you very much. Last week, I think Mr. Thompson gave a complete explanation of that. There was an opportunity for questions, and it was passed unanimously. But, Mr. Thompson, can you repeat the information that you shared last week?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Maury Thompson, Deputy County Manager. So all of those funds that we talked about last week and the board acted on go into the general fund reserve. As I stated at that time, the community, communitywide support fund was created as a subset of the full general fund reserves to be ordered to provide transparency to this board and to the public of how those federal funds are being spent. If you didn't create that, the CSF within the general fund reserve, they would go into the, the broader pool and less difficult to track and be able to clearly show how they were being expended.
So I want to add, I want to add a clarification to what Maury said. So I, part of what you said with the sixty, I think, is correct. And so can, I think, we'll ask Robin to clarify, please.
Yes. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk through the timeline and where, how the money flows, and there's some accounting entries. So in May of two thousand twenty-one, we received the first tranche of funding of the state and local fiscal recovery funds. That was fifty-eight point four million. So that year, we did not spend any of those funds. And so there was a budget in two thousand twenty-two, which is in countywide, of fifty-eight point four six million. However, that money at the time does not fall to reserves. It's classified as deferred revenue with the intent to spend the next year. So in the countywide budget, if you look in two thousand twenty-two estimate, there's fifty-eight point six million in revenue, which was that revenue, and then fifty-eight million in the expenditures. And so in March of two thousand seventeen, the board identified forty...
March of when?
Of twen- March seventeen of two thousand twenty-two. The board identified forty-five million of lost revenue that was transferred into the countywide support funds, which again, as Maury said, is segregated, so it has better tracking and better transparency. It does not flow into the general funds at this point, because again, it's determined to be deferred revenue, that the board will determine, you know, the purpose of that. But again, it's designated in that fund, and it can only be spent with board approval.
But that, but that, but that is under, would be under expenditures in the budget rather than reserves.
So that's over here for right now.
Okay.
So then there were public health and administrative expenses of about five million, and then community investment of about eight point four million. So all of those combined equal your fifty-eight point four million.
How much?
The fifty-eight point four initial. So those three, the lost revenue of forty-five million, public health and administrative expenses of five million, and community investment of eight point four. All of those were the first tranche.
Okay, and under the, okay, and on the forty-five million and the lost revenue, what departments was that?
So hold on. I just want to go through so then you can see where they're at. So then, in May of two thousand twenty-two, just recently, we got the second tranche of the fifty-eight point four million. And so again, what the board approved on August twenty-fifth was to capture the lost revenue of forty point five million. And so there's unauthorized community investment of eighteen point four. So all of that together equals the one hundred and seventeen million that we received from the government.
Thank you for that explanation. You know, I...
I still...
You have another question?
Yes, I'm still...
And I can, and I can, one more step. And so the forty-five and the forty point five million is the eighty-five point five million that we've been talking about in the countywide support fund. And so with your action, then that goes to the countywide support fund. So as of right now, the board has authorized twenty-one point six million of that through board action. And then there's future planned commitments, some with the sheriff additional compensation, airport investment, Evergreen. Some of those that we've discussed of thirty-four point nine million. And so after that, that leaves a remaining amount of twenty-eight point nine million in the countywide support fund.
Okay.
The, the thirty-four point nine has not been approved. Those are just planned commitments that will come forward to the board, because again, anything in that countywide support fund has to be approved by the board.
Okay. So the sixty million that's on the budget...
The sixty million, so we had the fifty-eight. We assumed we'd spend the first tranche this year, the fifty-eight before. The sixty million is the second tranche that. So we have two years, which both equal the one hundred and seventeen million.
Correct.
Yes.
But they, but there's, there's sixty million currently in the countywide support fund.
Currently in the expenditure with grant revenue.
Right, but it's under miscellaneous, and we do, and, and we have not, with board action, made any decisions as to how to spend that money. And that is my concern...
Other than the twenty-one point six.
So there's...
It's already been approved.
So out of the...
Out of the eighty-five point...
Right, out of the eighty-five. But so, so that, but the sixty million that's on the budget, that, that is the...
That has not come back for board action.
Correct.
So we have it in the expenditures so that we have the authority.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, that that is in the expenditures instead of the general fund reserves. And that, that bloats our expenditures for, I know that this is real nerdy conversation, but it's, but it's important because it impacts your future budgets. So we have the sixty million dollars on the expenditure side, and...
Of one-time grant money.
Right. But we have it on the expenditure side instead of the general fund side. And, and for transparency, the, the, these funds, as Mr. Thompson said last week, that technically, they should be in the general fund reserve, but because, because of our action, then we have put it in the countywide support.
Right, for more transparency, so they're designated in that fund so that we can track, just like now, we can track...
Which is a designated reserve fund.
Correct, okay. All right. I, I understand, but it's on the expenditure side, and it's bloating the budget. And we don't have the transparency as to where that's going to be expended. And I know, and I understand that we have the authority to spend from the reserves also. But my question is, so we had the sixty million in, in the budget under county, countywide support services. And then last week, we had the action of the forty million...
The forty million is part of that.
That's what, that was, that's simply the clarification that I have been trying to chase down for a week. So we have, we have a total of sixty million. Okay.
That's, that's the budgeted expenditure. There is more than that, because the eighty-five is only in the countywide support fund. The remaining amount is for community investment. That again, the board will come back, because remember, it's a hundred and seventeen million, not eighty-five. The eighty-five is the lost revenue that will, is in the countywide support fund. The other is the thirty-one million that is the community investment that Maury brought forward during the, the wrap-up session, our final budget. He presented that PowerPoint, and he had all the different options of where that funding could possibly go.
Okay.
So that is what Maury would bring forward as we go through this process, and then the board would make decision on where that community investment dollars...
Okay, so actually, we have ninety-one million dollars of COVID money that has not been designated to any specific expenditure. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you include, yes, if you include the sixty after the, we've spent plus then the additional.
And thirty-one, and so those are unallocated dollars at the current...
Ninety, yeah, ninety-five.
But, but, but that total ninety-one million is on the expenditure side of our budget, correct?
Correct. It would be in this year's budget and next year's, the combination of that.
Okay, well, I had, I had estimated that there was a hundred million running around, but I was, it was, it was, there was no clarification, and I really appreciate you walking me through this. I was nine, I was nine million dollars off. So, okay.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Um, I think that that clarification from staff is exactly what I wanted to accomplish.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Uh, wait. I think that Commissioner Ashcraft has a question.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, yes, I do. Ms. Imes, I'm sorry to pull you back up, but one clarification. One of the issues that Commissioner O'Hara raises related to transparency, and I think that's a fair concern for all of us. Can you explain how the segregation of accounts provides greater transparency? And I'm thinking in terms of the chart of accounts usually has specific restrictions in terms of how monies come in, the flow of funds in and out. Can you offer us some, some assurances that the funds that you're, you've been talking about are appropriately segregated and will be controlled accordingly?
Yes, they are set up in a specific grant account that, so they have, we have a specific project, grant project account. So all those funds are within that, and those are the only funds in that. And so we track it by, like, you could pull that project account at some point, or grant, and, and you would be able to see all of the, the deposits or, or, you know, the expenditures from that.
And encumbrances.
And I'd like to add... Yes, and encumbrances.
It would take board action to do any actions out of that, suspend it.
You know, I would, I would also make this note, you know, even during twenty twenty, the COVID dollars, Mr. Thompson made frequent reports on those amounts, how they were being expended, almost on a weekly basis. So all of that information has been provided to the public, and that process will continue on additional funds. Ms. O'Hara.
Um, absolutely. Mr. Thompson gave us those weekly, or monthly, or bi-weekly reports, depending on, on where we were in the cycle. But I think it is extremely important to understand that we have ninety-one million dollars of unallocated monies in this budget. And, and just in my opinion, it would have been better to reflect that ninety-one million in the, in the hundred and ninety-seven point four general fund reserves so that the public would understand that we had, like, two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, eighty-eight million dollars in, in, in reserves rather than just a hundred and ninety-seven point four. I mean, we have it, we have just, we've, we've transferred this to different accounts. It's, it's, I mean, Maury said that this, that these should, that these are in reserve funds, but they're not in the general reserve funds, so it has subtracted that nine, that ninety-one million, but we still have a hundred and ninety-seven point four million in there. I understand that this...
Ms. Imes, could you speak to that?
Yeah, the, the one thing that I would say is that we like to be careful with our general fund reserves. So we want to make sure with the public and with rating agencies and, and other entities that within the general fund, there are restricted uses of that. For instance, if there's fee expenditures or other, I mean, we want to make sure that we are classifying it correctly. And so if we, these are restricted to have, to have board action. They're within a grant, a separate than, than the general fund. And so, I mean, that flows in, but we at least want to keep them separate. So then that way, it's not assumed that we have that, because again, we, it does need board action. It is a separate grant, and so that is why I want to segregate it so that we can see what's restricted and what is not restricted.
Thank you. You know, I would just simply, we need to move on to the agenda, but I want to make one comment. You know, our budget process begins by the staff back in February and March. And following their recommendations, we go through a process over two or three months where we hear from all departments as to their budget information and requests. All of that information is done in a public meeting. People are welcome to come, and they're welcome to observe that on, online. So we have several months of public discussion of our budget. And then we come down to the public hearing in July, and then we have to move forward. So if there's no motion...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to clarify to the public that on that, when the, when the staff comes in, we are, they are briefing us on requests for additional revenues and that we have a piece of paper that we, we, we actually state which one, what, what we want to revisit as a board. And it takes three commissioners to be able to bring up any specific issue. And we're not, we're not talking about the entire budget. We're just talking about the request for additional revenues. Last year, I was chastised because I voted against the budget, and I didn't have any motions to, to make, to reduce it. Well, this actually is now the only time that I have the opportunity to go into specific suggestions and motions. And, and I think that our process is flawed. We should be able to discuss this... We should be able to discuss this in, in a full manner exactly from the, from March on through. But that's not what happens. It takes three commissioners to even discuss the request for additional revenues, not the, not the entire budget. I mean, we are very limited in scope. Today, I'm not limited in scope, and so I am bringing these issues up. And I really appreciate, uh, Robin walking through this and helping me find that additional 31 million because I had no idea where it was. We go through a lot of, of, um, we go through a lot of meetings and, and it is hard to, uh, keep all of this straight, and if it's not very, very transparent in the budget, and I, and I have, I have delved deep into this budget. It's not like I have not read the documents because I have. And again, I, all this last week, I was asking for more information, and I am just so appreciative of Robin coming to the microphone and explaining it. And so I, thank you. I, but, but as far as the budget process, we have lots of room to make big improvements for the individual commissioners to have more input.
All right, well, thank you very much. One clarification, I would just simply clarify, commissioners have every opportunity during the budget presentation to ask questions, ask for clarification. And, uh, following that total review by commissioners, uh, there are items that some commissioners want to review, and if a majority, or at least three, do not want to review those, then we go forward. But there is always ample opportunity all the way through the process for commissioners to ask questions, to ask for clarification of the staff. And if that happens, that's great, and if it doesn't happen, why, sometimes it happens at this time. So anyway, there are, there is no motion, so we will move forward to, thank you very much. There is no motion, so we'll move forward to the.
And, and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, because I really did need this information and clarification before we come, go into the budget.
There's always the opportunity to ask, ask staff ahead of time.
But I like to have this out in the public. I did ask staff, and, and this is important that the public understands this too. So anyway, no, no, please.
All right.
I want to, I just want to thank the chairman for allowing this discussion, thank you.
All right, next item, we'll move to the action agenda, item number two, please.
Resolution number 059-22, application number SW22-225-CUP-GA. Consider request from Yatzi Construction, applicant, and Brian and Penny Blank, landowners, for conditional use permit approval for an oversized accessory building on five acres located at 16199 Gardner East Road on property zoned RLD residential low-density district in section 13, township 14, range 22.
Mr. Penley.
Good morning, Commissioner Sean Penley, Planning Department. Following a request is a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building on five acres. The property is located at 16199 Gardner East Road. Subject property is identified here in the blue, um, outline of the property with a red, uh, circle. This is, uh, property is just located south of Gardner Lake. Uh, this is an aerial view of the subject property. The request is for an oversized accessory building. The regulations allow for this, um, for up to 2,100 square feet for a property this size. Uh, this property is five acres, um, so the proposed accessory building area would be a total of 4,000 square feet. Uh, so the additional accessory building area is allowed with a conditional use permit. The proposal is for a 2,925 square foot accessory building that would be located in the rear yard, identified with the star here in this, uh, aerial view. And, uh, the proposed building will be located approximately 110 feet from the nearest residential structure. This is located next to, uh, the city of Gardner. Uh, there's a single-family residential neighborhood to the east. And the setbacks would be 50 feet from the rear property line. That would meet all required setbacks for accessory buildings. The surrounding area is owned, uh, res, a combination of residential and RUR agricultural. There are similar properties, uh, to the south in the unincorporated area that have similar oversized accessory buildings. This is a, a rendering of the proposed accessory building. And this is an aerial view showing other similar, um, sized, oversized accessory buildings on the properties in the county. So this would be comparable to other accessory buildings in the area. The applicant did provide, uh, screening with, uh, existing trees on the site and additional setbacks, uh, that would be providing, uh, additional screening. This application was heard by the Southwest Zoning Board on July 27th. A public hearing was held. One person spoke with questions regarding trees and drainage. Staff responded to those questions. The zoning board recommended approval of the conditional use permit with stipulations, including a term of 20 years. I believe, uh, the applicant, uh, Brian Blank, is available on Zoom, and that concludes staff's presentation, happy to answer your questions.
Any questions of the staff? The applicant is present, any comments you'd like to make?
No comments.
No comments from the applicant, any questions of the applicant? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission and a motion would be in order, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution number 059-22, which approves a conditional use permit request to allow oversized accessory buildings with a total area of approximately 4,000 square feet on approximately five acres for the reasons and subject to speculations set forth within the resolution.
Second, Hanslick.
Allenbrand made the motion, Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the resolution, and the CUP application, is there any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried, next item.
Item number three, application number SW22-220-PP/FPMC. Consider request from Scott Wesley, manager for KKSW Properties LLC, applicant, landowner, for preliminary and final plat approval for two residential lots on 149 acres to be known as 175th and Edgerton on property zoned RUR rural district located at 17770 Edgerton Road in section 25, township 14, range 21.
Ms. Wicklin.
Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of 175th and Edgerton Road, uh, as shown here on the vicinity map. Uh, this is a preliminary and final plat application for two residential lots on, uh, 149 acres to be known as 175th and Edgerton. Uh, the plat does comply with all required zoning and subdivision regulations. Uh, here's an aerial view of the, um, uh, surrounding area, and the subject property is outlined in blue. And, uh, here's a copy of the final plat showing the two lots. Also to note that at the first zoning board meeting, the zoning board voted to continue the application because several members of the public came to the meeting and expressed, uh, concerns regarding the, uh, dimensions and lot area of the plat, the survey. After that meeting, the applicant surveyor met with the neighbors, answered their questions, and, um, were satisfied with that survey document after that. Therefore, the neighbors' concerns ha, have been resolved. Uh, planning staff recommends approval. Uh, the zoning board also recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat with stipulations. Uh, with that, I can stand for questions, and, uh, I believe Scott Wesley, the applicant, is on Zoom.
Okay, questions of the staff? Applicant present? Any comments from the applicant?
Scott, you may speak, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, can you hear me now?
Yes, any comments you'd like to make?
Okay, no, thank you, I'm just here to answer any questions.
All right, questions of the applicant? Anyone present who would like to comment on this item? If not, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order, sixth district is busy today. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a preliminary and final plat to be known as 175th and Edgerton for the reasons subject to speculations as recommended by the zoning board.
Myers, second. Allenbrand made the motion, Myers seconded the motion to approve the recommendation as presented from the zoning board and staff in regards to this resolution. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye, I have seven votes in favor, motion carried, next item.
Item number four, application number SW22-228-PP-FPMC. Chris and Sarah Haig, applicants and landowners, are requesting a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be ne, to be known as One Horse Ranch on 33.8 acres on property zoned RUR rural district located nearby the northeast corner of 159th Street and Edgerton Road.
Ms. Wicklin.
Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. Uh, the subject property is located near, uh, 159th Street and Edgerton Road. Uh, again, here shown on the vicinity map. Uh, this is a preliminary and final plat application for two residential lots on 33 acres to be known as One Horse Ranch. Uh, the plat does comply with all required zoning and subdivision regulations. Uh, here's an aerial view, um, of the subject property outlined in blue. And then this is just a surrounding, uh, aerial view of the surrounding area. And here's a copy of the final plat. Uh, no members of the public spoke at the zoning board meeting for this application. Planning staff recommends approval, and the zoning board also recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat with stipulations. Uh, with that, I can stand for questions, and, uh, Chris Haig, the applicant, uh, is here in, in person.
All right, questions of the staff? Does the applicant wish to make any comments? All right, so noted, the applicant has no comments or other questions of the applicant. All right, anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? It's back before the commission, sixth district, once again, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be known as One Horse Ranch for the reasons and subject to speculations recommended by the zoning board.
Myers, second. Allenbrand made the motion, Myers seconded the motion to approve the preliminary and final plats as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye, I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Moving to item number five.
Item number five, resolution number 061-22. Consider approving the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Johnson County Fire District Number One and adopting resolution number 061-22.
Mr. Clemmons, let me make this comment, uh, thank you to the fire personnel who were present this morning. I thought we wouldn't get to, uh, this, these issues much earlier than we did, so thank you for hanging in there, uh, Mr. Clemmons.
Good morning, Ted Clemmons with Budget Department. This item is the approval by the B.O.C.C. as required by state statute for the Fire District Number One 2023 budget. Their board previously approved that budget. And as you look on these charts, you will notice, um, that their expenses increased 3.7 million. However, they will be coming before their board and, and this board, I believe, in around November to amend their 2022 budget to increase roughly 2.7 million on the revenue and expense side, which will not affect, um, any property tax, it's just because of the Fire District Two contract. So that, that increase will go down. And then you'll note that the ad valorem tax increases by about $530,000, and there is a 0.281 decrease in the mill, mill levy estimation due to debt service. And now I will let Chief Myers discuss, um, the remaining slides.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Chief.
Seems like we were here yesterday doing this, the years fly by. Before we get started, I like to give a, a real, uh, big thanks to Robin and Ted for helping us get to the, all the steps that we had to do in the Budget Department for the revenue neutral. They, uh, made sure we were on track, hit our numbers, hit everything we should, we should have. So Robin and Ted, thanks, I appreciate it very much. Uh, so this year's been pretty exciting for Fire District Number One. Uh, as you know, uh, in November, on November the 28th to 21st, we, uh, initiated the merger with Fire District Number Two, the contractual merger with Fire District Number Two. And we took over the Response District from Lockman to the west. We took over the Spring Hill Fire Station, and we added 22 new employees to our, uh, our Fire District Number One, employees that transferred over from Fire District Number Two. With the help of Chief Francis, this has been, I would say, a very seamless operation from the beginning. Uh, we worked through all the little quirks that we had with it, and, uh, it really has worked out really well. That has increased the Response District for, uh, Fire District Number One to 210 square miles. Uh, and we, we, uh, cover a population of about 45,500 now. So the district is growing. We also opened up the new fire station at Logistics Park, or fire station and administration building. Uh, that is, uh, was completed January 1 and opened up January 1. And with the Spring Hill Station and our new station, we now have five fire stations that are staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with 20 full-time firefighters on duty every day, with two battalion chiefs to cover the district. So our district really has increased in the last year. Our growth, our growth, sorry, our growth continues within the Fire District. The city of Gardner has approved 2,500 residential structures and two apartment complexes to be constructed in the next 12 months. The city of Edgerton's Planning Commission and City Council has approved a subdivision, which we're very excited about, in Edgerton, 275 new homes in the city of Edgerton. As you know, the New Century Air Center is, also has 4.6 million square feet of warehouses under construction at this time. And Logistics Park currently continues to grow. We have 16 million square feet of warehouses in operation today. We have 78,000 vehicles a day that go in and out of that facility, and they're proposing another 2 million square feet of warehouses i, in the next year. And along with Spring Hill has also continued to grow. We're starting to see some, uh, plans come through of possible apartment complexes, more housing additions. So, uh, unlike some of the cities, we have, uh, 360 growth in our Fire District right now, which, uh, is, is really amazing and, uh, works really well. In July of '22, uh, we came across the situation with the merger of the two fire departments with, uh, equalization of pay. We had some of our firefighters that were making, at, at certain level, were making more money than firefighters from Fire District Number Two. And working with Chief Francis, we completely went through our pay scale and s, and redid the whole deal, which in turn brought his, the employees that transferred over up to our level. And with that, some of our employees, captains and lieutenants, were below their level. So we had to equalize all that to make sure it was across the board the way it's supposed to be. Plus, we completely redid our whole pay scale. So every employee on the Fire District One now knows exactly, whenever, wherever they're at in their career, a number of years, they're going to know exactly where their pay should be. And, uh, there's no compression built, we took away all the compression that was built into that. That did, however, uh, cost us $800, $89,000 for the rest of the year because that, we made that in July, we made that change, needed to make it. So that will carry into the '23 budget. The focus for '23's budget is on our employees. We have the same issues that a lot of the county departments do with retaining our employees and keeping our employees, uh, working for us. Uh, we're against, uh, my friend, Chief Dean of our department with pay in the city of Olathe. Uh, so we, we're working very hard to make sure our employees' pay is up to the level it needs to be. There's no way that we can compete at those, some of those top levels because the funding's just not there. But our goal is to be in the mid-range if we can with ours. Our board is very supportive of this, we're working really hard to do that. Uh, you know, we have firefighters out there that have the exact same training, the exact same certifications, do the exact same, in many cases, side by side are fighting firefighters together that are making three to. together that are making $3,000 to $5,000 less a year than some of the other county fire, fire departments. And we have to correct that in the county. As budget allows us, we need to try to step that up. And that's, that's how we keep our employees, because we have employees that, that want to jump ship to go to that, the greener side. And so, we're working on that real hard. The transition of all employees that came over from District Two, we inherited quite a few paramedics in them, which is a great thing. So, we have 20, 24-hour, seven-days-a-week coverage out of the Spring Hill Station with a paramedic on engines that respond with MEDAC. And we also integrated, integrated some of those into Fire District Number One in Gardner. So, one of our stations in Gardner is 90% of the time has a paramedic on every call that runs with MEDAC, 90% of the time. We also have three people that we're paying for to go through paramedic school, so we can enhance that paramedic response within the City of Gardner and continue the response in the City of Spring Hill. Our Prevention Division, which this is not a performance measure that we were asked to provide, but I think is very important, is our Prevention Division, which includes plan reviews, fire inspections, and some public education. We completed 100% inspections on all the properties, commercial properties in the cities of Spring Hill, Gardner, and Edgerton. 100% of those were inspected. We have a prevention division with a fire marshal, and we also have a fire inspector that works in that. Those proposals that, that you all just approved that were in sixth district, that's also in our Fire District, we look at every one of those that comes through. We see that. We review those, make sure there's no problems with that for us. This is a division that very soon, because of our growth, we're probably going to have to expand that division in the future. But prevention, it's easier to prevent it than it is to put it out. So, we put a lot of emphasis in, in our Prevention Division. Under our performance measures, we project that we're going to have a 5% increase in calls this year, which we're on track to do that and maybe more, and then also in '23. Fire EMS services, as we know, are built on response times. As we continue to grow and our call loads continues to increase, we're seeing it more difficult to get within that five-minute response times. You know, we're having new subdivisions put in areas that we're farm-run. And eventually, we're going to have to put fire stations in those locations in order to get that response time down. We use a five-minute response time, which is really above the national average, but it's important that we get to those residents in, in that five-minute response time. So, that's going to be, you know, one of our, if you see in our performance measures, that's one of the areas I think it is in the yellow, because we do have some areas that we can't get to. Plus, with our rural areas, it's extremely difficult for us to get to those in five minutes, due to the infrastructure and just the distance it takes to get there. You know, the new fire station at Logistics Park has really helped us in that vicinity as far as that five-minute response, and it's also added three more firefighters on duty a day for us to respond to the rest of the district. As I said, our pay scales continue to rise and develop, develop, we also developed a whole new leadership philosophy and working on a new leadership philosophy for Fire District Number One. In '22, we eliminated four chief positions, upper-level chief positions, and put that savings into firefighters in seats. We thought that was way more important. In order for us to open up that new fire station, we actually only had to hire three, added three full-time positions in there, and that's what we use that money for, to put firefighters in seats. We will continue to work on that with our employees. We feel it's important for us to make an environment for our employees to come to work that really want to come to work there, so they don't want to go somewhere else. And our command staff, and we do have a full-blown command staff that, we run this as a team. I don't make all those decisions. I have a great command staff, and we sit and we talk about these things. We're getting ready to start off with a whole new philosophy. We're the newest firefighter to the oldest firefighter, as it says so in what we're doing in that Fire District, because it is an opportunity. We almost have two new fire departments coming together, and we have a great opportunity to get that going. Our prevention vision under performance measures, our burn permits were down some and public education. We, really, that has to do with COVID. We're just now starting to ramp back up, opening up things and being able to go back to the schools and being able to have tours in fire stations. So, you're going to see those numbers start increasing for '23. At the present time, like burn permits, we pretty much just let them have burn permits, just because we couldn't make personal contact with them due to the COVIDs and stuff, so. Lastly, I think most of you are well aware, our crews, as we speak, are setting up for the airshow. The airshow's this weekend, and we're very much involved in that with crews and providing all the fire protection for the airshow. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
All right, well, thank you, Chief. You know, thank you for the good work you've done this past year in meeting the challenges of the district, and so, appreciate that very much. Just one question, maybe it's for Mr. Clemmons. Is this a revenue-neutral budget or not?
In aggregate, all the districts would have exceeded the revenue-neutral rate, although a note, Fire District Two only did so because of a new bond that's set at zero.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions of Chief Myers? Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned the new fire station at the Logistics Park, and I know that, I believe all of those buildings are still under industrial revenue bonds, so they're, as I understand it, the documentation that I've seen, they're paying like 16 cents a square foot.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so, how has this, how has this impacted your budget as, because you're having to, you're having to provide the fire services, and the 16 cents, just as an example, I have two 40-year-old metal buildings in Olathe that, the parking lot's not even paved, but I pay over $2 a square foot, and these are brand-new facilities. So, this is a huge, huge tax break. So, I have two questions. How has this impacted your budget as far as having to provide the fire service and, and having them only paying approximately 10% of their property tax? And then, as these buildings roll off of the industrial revenue bonds, which I think maybe 2024 will be the first one, 2025, okay?
Correction, they will roll off in '24. We won't see revenues until '25.
So, you'll see new, you'll see new revenue in 2025. Okay, so, it's two more budget cycles out. How is that, how, number one, how has it impacted you that you've had to provide the service, yet you're not getting the revenue? And, and how has it, how has that shortfall been made up? And then, looking forward, how is this going to impact the mill levy going forward?
Sure. So, we did pass a bond issue to build that fire station out there, so we had an increase to the taxpayer for that bond. As far as the operation of the fire station, with the increase in our budget through assessed valuation, not raising the mill levy, we were able to absorb the extra costs in that. And by some of the elimination of those chief positions, we've, we've tried to accommodate opening that fire station and taking care of it within the limits of our budget by making changes internally within the budget. But let me make it perfectly clear about our opinion about that. So, we do receive about $400,000 in pilot money. So, we do receive money from those buildings that are out there. And we just went through a budget exercise with the Budget Department. Just remember that those same buildings that are on the ground today, and we're going to start seeing this in '25, that $400,000 equates to $3.9 million in revenue to the Fire District. When those buildings roll off after about eight years now, that's what that equates to, at the day's evaluation. So, when we start seeing that money starting to roll into the Fire District, as we will in '25, that's when you're going to see, depending on what's going on, but that's when you're going to see the mill levy start to come down in our Fire District. I look at the, the, the commercial properties that are baited today, that's our future revenue for the Fire District and for the whole county, to be honest with you. So, if you, if you think about that, $3.9 million for the Fire District alone, that's taking away the District Two's funding, that's almost half our budget that will be funded from those buildings that are out there. Now, it's going to be, it's going to be probably another eight years before we see that complete done, and that's every year that's going to be coming in. So, I look at all those buildings as our future. It's like a business that has backlog of work. We have a backlog of revenue that's going to start rolling into this Fire District to help pay for those future stations that we're going to need, and, and we've said that all along, that it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. We have to suffer a little bit until we get to that point, but we're, we have the light at the end of the tunnel. '25, we're going to start seeing the first, $190,000, the first in, in '25.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your, your explanation. So, basically, right now, the balance of the, of the Fire District through increased valuation is shouldering the expense of, of the expansion.
Part of it.
Okay.
But understand that, for example, we have a new QuickTrip in the City of Gardner that has no abatements, and it's there solely because of the intermodal. So, we are getting revenue for incidental businesses that are also coming to the city. If you make a trip to Gardner, which backs right up to the intermodal, there's tons of development going in there that, it really relates right back to the intermodal and the buildings at the intermodal. So, you can't really just say that it all goes to the taxpayers. They're all taxpayers, but there's more businesses coming in to help that revenue, to generate that revenue to support the Fire District.
I also want to really applaud you for rolling back the, the number of chiefs and that you're putting that into the, the lower echelon and the pay scale of, of, of your, of your department. I, I really applaud you for that. So, thank you for the explanation.
Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, I promise I won't embarrass you every single year, but I also want to thank the County Manager's Office. Maury Thompson was led along with Chief Francis and yourself, and I look back of what happened, has happened in the past two years. So, you were responsible for the new fire station that was going up, and then all of a sudden, we come to you and say, "By the way, can you run this fire station?" But not only did we go in and opened a new fire station, we created a new board, which I know your chair's here, and we have an appointment from each one of the cities that's being served by that board. But you also went and took the initiative to look at a plan, a payment plan for your entire staff, and you've been working on that not just one year, but it's been almost two years that you've put that into place. You've been very proactive with the schools and with the college to try to recruit new firefighters. And the other thing that I admire that has been done, that you also continue to work with other entities in looking at our truck patterns, our traffic patterns, response times, and that is extremely key. And I think every commissioner up here, speaking for myself and every, we really applaud you and what you've done with a team. I know it takes a team to do this. You didn't do it on your own, but what a big difference. And I, I, I would, I, we need to give them a round of applause for what they've done within our Fire District One. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Myers, since you're, you're first in the, in the slot here, I will direct these questions to you, but for the other chiefs in the audience, you may hear similar questions. I appreciate your presentation, and actually, it was a good reminder, we have been so focused on the fellow formerly known as Chief Francis and his perspective on this consolidation. It's good to get your perspective, and thank you for your words. Chief, our role at this time is to review and approve your budget. In the past, we've had separate sessions in which we can have some conversations, so some of these questions would have occurred if we'd had that earlier session. I apologize for that, and then I will have a question for Ms. Sims before we, before I finish. But Chief, couple of points, and you had indicated in your presentation the work that you had done in fire prevention work, and I think that's notable and it's important. Fire suppression is your core responsibility, but prevention is also a key performance indicator. So, I wanted to ask, and I will tell all the departments and the Budget Office, your attempt to standardize your performance indicators this year is far ahead of what you have done in years past. So, whoever is working on that, thank you. I, I appreciate it. But I wanted to ask if the, the measures that you're presenting is kind, kind of the, the development of those, because you have a few, but you don't have a, have many outcome measures, and I think the fire prevention measure is a valid one, but even as you said, it's not in your key performance indicator. So, I would encourage you as you go forward, and I know you're in a big transition, and I would encourage all the departments to look at those key performance indicators focusing on outcomes, because all due respect, the, the number of calls you get is probably important to you, but how quickly you respond, your ability to minimize damage or keep the incident to the room of origin, or the, the number of lives lost and injuries are more important indicators than you got 1,000 calls versus 2,000 calls for me, okay? It may be important to you, but in terms of indicating your, your value to the community, I, I would encourage you to look at that, and I don't know if Mr. Francis would be available to help, but I know he may have an interest in that, and Mr. Thompson as well. So, I just offer that as an observation. I wanted to ask, though, you, in your scorecard, you had indicated both customer and operational effectiveness, some severe issues. I'm not trying to be dramatic, but they were both red indicators, and I'm just wondering, what is your desire, your attempt this coming year to enhance resident confidence and provide effective fire suppression? And how, how you're going to demonstrate that?
Sure. Most of those, the reds, came out of the public education side and the building permit side, or the building burn permit issues. So, we were down in those particular categories. So, our response times, you know, it, it was, we had a few of those that were over five minutes. So, to be fair about it, you know, we want to show you that we still have some areas that are over five minutes. Far as the prevention part of it, we're getting back into being able to do public events. COVID really set those numbers way back. You know, we used to spend hours in the schools working with the kids, and last year, we were able to go in and do like one program in each one of the schools during fire prevention weeks, which, those are all numbers you bring down. And, you know, we, we are not, we haven't been doing station tours, for example, or doing birthday parties and stuff like that. So, you're going to, those numbers kind of went down from the COVID stuff, just because we couldn't expose our firefighters to COVID, because that's disastrous for us. One gets it, they're all gone. So, you know, our, our plan is, to answer your question, is we're going to ramp that all back up again, enhance that.
Okay, well, just an observation, those activities may very well be value-added, but I'm trying to see how they link to enhance resident confidence in fire safety. So, I, you know, do you ask them about their confidence, what they'd like to see done, how they'd like to see those interactions? I'm not saying you shouldn't do those things, but I just am not seeing the linkage.
We, which is hard to put in your graph and answer your questions, but we survey, we send out 10 surveys a month. We select calls, randomly select calls. We send out 10 surveys a month with about a 10-question ten surveys a month with about a ten-question survey on those. And we ask for their comments. And those in the survey, it says, did we get there in a reasonable amount of time? Were the people, were our people courteous? You know, did they take care of your needs? Did they answer all your questions? Right on down the line. And we've been doing that for three years, four years.
Well, very good.
Even longer. And it's not in here.
It has not reflected.
I agree. It's not in there. And, you know, we, we get a probably about a fifty percent return on those. So we mail those directly to the resident that had the call. We're not just surveying everybody, the person that actually called us. And we get about a fifty percent return on those. We give them a sealed envelope stamp, and they send it back to us.
Okay.
Most of those, if I brought those to you, you go through those, ninety-nine point nine percent of those are excellent, 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 excellent. Where we get the complaint, if you want to say a complaint, is it took too long for the ambulance to get there.
Okay.
A related question, and this is not just for you, I think it's for all the departments, is in terms of your equipment needs. Fire equipment, as we all know, is expensive. Do, does the county provide its support and expertise in terms of the maintenance and acquisition of that equipment? Is there a pooling of responsibility and leveraging of that ability that might be available to help with those costs and, and those processes?
The answer to that is no. The county doesn't provide any maintenance for our vehicles whatsoever. That has been opened up as a discussion point with the fire districts that could county fleet maybe help us with those kind of things. And we're investigating some of those things. But, you know, our apparatus is a little different, because it's rural operations, than, say, Overland Park. We carry a lot more water, we do this. So we do talk about those things within our fire group. But we don't actually set order trucks together ten at a time or something like that.
And this question was raised earlier, and I do commend you at looking at your administrative overhead. You'd indicated four chiefs. What is the ratio of chiefs to firefighters in your department?
Well, I guess it depends on, if we're counting battalion chiefs that are on duty every day, too. I, I really never looked at that. It's, well, we are, Aaron, or...
All right. Okay, thank you.
One last question, yes, for Ms. Sims. The, Mr. Clemmons indicated that this is not revenue neutral. But I was wondering, revenue neutral does not include new growth in the calculation. And new growth, as most fire districts, I think, would recognize, has an impact on service and service delivery costs. If new growth had been incorporated in that revenue-neutral calculation, where would their, would their budget still exceed that?
I'm guessing more than likely for new growth. I know for the county, it was one percent. In your area, it's probably a lot more. And we can, we've got the tax abstract that shows that. But yes, I'm guessing even with new growth, that it would, it would still exceed that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? Ms. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Again, is there anyone present? If not, Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you. So, Robin? How much, how much does this exceed revenue neutral?
Oh, I have to look. Ted, Ted actually did most of the detail. I think it's in the briefing sheet or the material.
I think it was like two mils or...
Ted, Ted will get it here in a second.
So that, that would be on attachment one. That has your revenue-neutral rates for all of the districts. And then it has how much their proposed levy are. I think I might have it open. I don't have it open, but I can open that. But attachment one would show you how much that exceeds. Okay, so for Fire District One, they have three revenue-neutral rates as determined by the county clerk. And their general EMS, which they consider operating, is twelve point one one oh. And the published levy is thirteen point five eight two. So I don't have a formula here, but that's like one point four seven two, maybe. And then the debt bond A is one point six two nine R and R. They have one point eight four six. And the debt bond B is one point five one two, and they have one point three eight five. So they are actually lower on that one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions? All right, I think at this point, it's time for a motion. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 budgets for Johnson County Fire District Number One and to adopt Resolution Number Zero Six One Dash Two Two.
Hanslick, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the budget request as recommended and presented. Any further questions or comments, Ms. O'Hara?
Commissioner Ashcraft can go first.
Pardon?
Commissioner Ash-
I'm recognizing you if you have a comment or question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I, I just want the public to understand. And, and I understand the philosophy of we're giving these huge tax incentives to, to these, to these large industrial buildings. But at this point, it is putting a burden on the rest of the taxing district, and that they are shouldering the responsibility. And this is an issue that continues to expand because of the number of incentives. And I just, I just want people to understand for transparency that this is an issue. And it is concerning, but we have to have fire protection for the good folks out in the Gardner area. And so those, those are just my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Chief, and I will thank all the chiefs, I very much appreciate the efforts to try to put together consistent across-the-board metrics. I would suggest we still have a lot of work to do. I have additional questions about the process and have reservations about exceeding revenue-neutral, even with the addition of new construction. So consequently, my votes will reflect those concerns.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, I just had a question in response to Commissioner O'Hara's comment. You mentioned we have provided these tax incentives. Could you define "we"?
I'm sorry, that, that, those industrial revenue bonds are approved by the cities and not the county commission. The county commission has responsibility on tax increment finance districts when they are first created. And putting the industrial revenue bonds and the TIF districts together, we're currently at two point eight billion dollars of real estate, commercial real estate, commercial industrial real estate in Johnson County under one or the other of those, of those programs. And the DeSoto Tax Increment Finance District that just was created earlier this year and that this, that this board approved, that will add another two, that will add another four billion to, to the amount of property that is not under, that, that is being diverted from public coffers.
Well, I would simply say this, benefits deferred are better than no benefits at all, because development does not occur. Ms. Allenbrand, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just very quickly want to correct a statement. Fire One serves more than just Gardner. It's, it's Spring Hill, unincorporated areas. I know New Century, Edgerton. So you service that whole area. So I want to clarify that. So whenever you're ready for a vote, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, if there are any other comments, the motion is before us. For approval, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have five votes in favor, two opposed, the motion carried. It's very, very important that we support our fire districts, no question at all. All right, thank you very much, Chief. Next item.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, Resolution Number Zero Six Two Dash Two Two. Consider approving the fiscal year 2023 budget for Northwest Consolidated Fire District and adopting Resolution Number Zero Six Two Dash Two Two.
Good morning.
Yes, Seth, Ted.
Forward and Chairman, this is the statutorily required approval by the BOCC of Northwest Consolidated Fire Districts. Expenses increased by four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, roughly due primarily to the net impact of capital, personnel, and transfers to reserves. And the neck chart shows that ad valorem taxes will increase by around three hundred and fifty thousand. And this results in an estimated mill levy that is lower by point zero zero seven. And that's due to declines in the general fund. I will let Chief Maxton discuss the budget now.
Okay, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. And also thank you to Robin and Ted for coordinating and the efforts that go into this. Chief Myers, thank you for taking, taking the lead. We're a little bit behind you in some areas. But these are going to be some important points that we can discuss as it affects us as well. As far as our public hearing that was conducted last week, we had two citizens. We usually don't have a large turnout. That was mainly for educational purposes. I will tell you that Northwest remains bond-free and debt-free outside of truck lease payments. Fleet modernization continues. Next year, this year, we replaced a thirty-year-old water hauling truck, a thirty-year-old truck that's in service. We've made tremendous upgrades over the past few years. Next year, two out of the four remaining trucks under lease purchase agreements are paid off. Next year is also the final year of our FEMA Safer Grant Award. That is a federal grant that covers four positions, firefighter positions, at one hundred percent over three years. Work comp insurance remains low due to low, low claims and low injury rates. Healthcare costs for the first, first time we're reporting are actually stabilized. A lot of this has to do with the increase in budgeted FTEs, and that we used to be community-rated. And now that we're level-funded, we can take those experience rates into consideration and also claims rates. Water rescue program development continues. As we speak, we have personnel down in Oklahoma City at River Sport going through a conference. As our district grows and the risk increases and the varying types of industry come into our district, we train to the level of risk that's within our community. That's only going to expand. We're well aware of that, and we have plans. One of the biggest items for improvement next year, similar to Chief Myers in District One, we have some significant wage increases because we're significantly behind. Approximately hourly employees will be receiving, as scheduled in this budget, over a ten percent increase. And we're still going to be below market, but we're playing catch-up. Our employees that are in the zero-to-five range, zero-to-five-year range, it's getting more equitable for them. But the top-out pay, especially in the region and in this county, continues to increase. And it is tough for us to compete with that. There's a lot of dirt moving within our district. And I think I should also point out, this budget proposal does not include any economic development news that has occurred in the past couple of months. It does not include that. So to keep up with abated growth, IRBs and items like that, we've navigated through it before. Our district does not have many of them. We do have some now. We work in partnership with the city of DeSoto. We have a good partnership. We're going to have a lot of needs. We're going to have a lot of tangible needs and ongoing operational cost. We are confident that we can continue bringing the right people to the table with our public and private partners and achieve that. We will navigate through that as well. And again, we talked about the risk management of higher hazard facilities that will be coming to the area. Taller buildings within the city of DeSoto will be happening, and not just one. We're assuming it will be many. We've also had an increase in unincorporated zoning application requests over the past year. Fire Station Number Thirteen in downtown DeSoto, we've been talking about that one for a couple of years. It still needs to be replaced, and we continue to work on that as well. The increase in personnel costs last year, or for the proposed year next year, the significance of those hourly increases, increases that line item quite a bit. And it takes away from our ability to provide relief factor positions. So we're not proposing any new additional positions next year, even though they are justified. Travel and response times remain consistently low throughout our district. Training hours remain on target. And we, in the next few weeks, are going to be going under our five-year ISO audit. With that being said, I'll take any questions.
Questions of the chief. Ms. O'Hara?
Obviously, with Panasonic coming in, you're going to have tremendous pressures because you're going to have to be increasing your staff because of the highly flammable nature of lithium. And, and that those, those fires are extremely, extremely toxic and extremely, extremely difficult to suppress. And this is going to be a very expensive endeavor. And with the Tax Increment Finance District that has, that has diverted a hundred percent of the, of, of the eligible tax dollars, and that only, that only leaves them paying fifty percent, approximately fifty percent of their school taxes. So how are you going to be able to get the revenue to, to address these needs? And I, I realize that the good people of Johnson County is already sending seven point five million dollars for a new fire station. Are you expecting the, this continual support from the general fund to subsidize this development?
As I stated, this is in its infancy. We couldn't even use the company name a month and a half ago. We still don't have all of the information. We have many pages of checklist. We believe that we have the right people in place at the table. We need to add more people to the table to, to go through our, our necessary items. We, we sit down, we brainstorm, and we're at the point, we know this isn't the short term. We're, we're well aware of how far into the future this goes. As far as commitments from, it's fair to say that we are still trying to identify other funding mechanisms. We're confident that they are out there, but it, it's still too premature for me to speak about that. We are still finishing up our, our needs assessment, a staffing plan. We're preparing, we're preparing for some of those funding mechanisms to not come to fruition. And to be able to take the excitement for our employees, for us to take the next step into the future and experience some of the same growth that Chief Myers and some of the other departments have had, it, it's going to take a lot.
Okay.
Well, thank, thank you. It's, it's, because I come from the construction industry, I will remember in the nineties that growth was supposed to pay for itself. And suddenly now, it's the bigger you are, as far as industrial, commercial entity coming in, the more tax incentives you get. And then that puts the burden on the greater taxing public. And I, I just, we are now seeing it. We, we've been seeing it forever because of all of these tax incentives, that is one of the drivers of our, of our property taxes increasing. And this is going to be extremely problematic as far as how we're going to fund it and how, and how this is going to impact every taxpayer. And, I mean, it already has with the seven point five million dollars going to the fire station. I, I have great concerns. And, and I appreciate that you're, you know, you're, you, you had no say in approving this, obviously. You, you are simply in a, in a position of reacting to the reality of this, of this abatement. And so it's just, it's going to be difficult.
Well, thank you for the comment, Chief. I have no firsthand information, but I'm sure the negotiations and discussions with the city, the landowner, and the development itself will continue in, in order to provide the, the level of, of, of financial help that's needed. So thank you very much. Other comments? Other comments? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank the county manager's office and Murray Thompson in working with your board and what you have done, working with other fire chiefs, working on your future pay plan, making sure benefits are in order, and there's been a lot of work that's been in place that you've done that, and I really appreciate that. Also, you know, the extreme amount of work that you and your board, especially you and your staff, have put in, looking at your fleet, I am always amazed at how detail that you get in looking at when something needs to be replaced, and so I applaud you for that. And, you know, we can't forget the work that you and your team have done on Sunflower with the fires that happen periodically on that site. So thank you for that and your board. And, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I have a motion.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Maxton, we've only had a chance to visit a few times, but I wanted to share with you that I keep hearing very good things about you and your leadership. I think you hinted at and maybe downright stated some of the challenges that you were facing and some of the unknowns, but you comport yourself very well, at least from the reports I get, so thank you for that. Having said that, and you have started to address it, Mr. Chairman, I think, and you and I have had this disagreement, it kind of highlights the fallacy of the TIF model because if you're not at the table, you're on the table. And in this case, the fire station, or the fire district, will attempt to respond, and I would offer, Chief, similar comments or the same comments that I offered to Chief Myers. I very much appreciate your efforts to try to outline your performance indicators and your scorecard. I would encourage you to look at outcome measures and have a unified approach, and it was a good effort. I'm not critical of it. I mean, compared to where we were just three or four years ago, it's a significant step up, so I appreciate that. But I would encourage you to go on, and especially in your case, Chief, your department and the stress you're under, you don't have, at least in the short term, as Chief Myers pointed out, there may be a light at the end of the tunnel, but we don't know if it's a train coming or going towards us. But any opportunity that you might be able to avail yourself of in coordination with the other districts in the county for equipment acquisitions and so forth, I would very much encourage you to do that. So just kind of general comments, Chief. I have any number of questions about your performance measures, but because of the lateness of the day, I won't get into that. But I did want to ask Ms. Sims if she had any further information on the revenue-neutral question that I had asked about District One related to this district. If the new growth were added in, would they still have violated revenue-neutral? That's not the right term.
It would have still exceeded.
Exceeded.
Not violated, excuse me.
Yes, Fire District One would have exceeded, and also Northwest Consolidated as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Consolidated Fire Two will be the same situation. The new growth was not.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. O'Hara.
Yes, I just want to make a comment on the tax increment finance district. The light at the end of the tunnel is a long way because tax increment finance districts, they abate these taxes. It's not abate. These taxes are taken out of the public coffers for 20 years, not 10, but 20. And how we are going to make up that difference is, and this is a big, this is a huge hole. It really is. And I agree with Commissioner Ashcraft that because you weren't at the table, you are now on the table, and this is going to have a significant impact. I'm very concerned that this is going to have a significant impact on the taxpayers, the other taxpayers in the DeSoto area and the Northwest area.
Well, I think it's obvious that without development on the Sunflower property, it would continue to sit there, and there would be no activity, no community benefit to be provided. So I would say this, I'm more optimistic than the expressions that have been made so far, and I do believe that there's opportunities for the issues involving the fire district to be addressed. So keep up the good work. All right?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, another comment?
Yes.
All right.
This is where the, this is where the, there's a fallacy. People say, well, there's not going to be any development. Well, if there isn't development, then there aren't services that are required. When you have development and then you abate all of the taxes, then naturally, the rest of the tax base is going to have to absorb those costs. So, and we have been in this era of tax increment finance districts and industrial revenue bonds for 25 years now, and not once have I seen taxes go down because of this growth. It continually sucks money out of the public coffers. And this one, I thought Edgerton with all of the million-square-foot buildings was a huge hit, but that is nothing in comparison to this Panasonic deal with the 100% tax increment finance district that will be diverting those tax dollars.
All right.
Anyway, good luck.
Thank you.
And it's good luck for all of us because we're all in the same boat.
Thank you very much for those comments. I know they're consistent with positions you've expressed time after time, and that's fine. There's room for difference of opinion, but I'd suggest that looking at the economic development opportunities that have been provided for our residents is a big, big plus. And so I think that needs to be recognized and overrides, I think, a lot of other concerns. So do we have a motion? Ms. Allenbrand.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 budgets for the Northwest Consolidated Fire District and adopt resolution number zero six two dash two two.
Hanslick second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the budget as presented for Northwest Fire District. Any questions or comments, Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar comments related to my previous vote. I do wish Commissioner, excuse me, Chief Maxton well, and I'm sure his leadership will take the district forward. I am particularly concerned, Chief, from the perspective of, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but you're a very small department, and you've got a big challenge ahead, and the model by which we provide those services, I know it's kind of a historical artifact. I would hope that we could reconsider that going forward because I think, particularly in this situation, your department and your operation would benefit if we had a broader, deeper, and better-coordinated effort for fire service. So that's not your problem, but you get to live with it. So I do wish you well.
All right. Just for the record, 18th-largest career department in the state of Kansas.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? All right, if not, motions back before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara. Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have five votes in favor, two opposed. You know, I don't want to offend anybody, and if I do, why, I apologize, but the two votes negative, if that was a majority vote, we would not have the, be able to provide the fire service. So I just want folks to understand, there's an opportunity for whatever opinion to be expressed when there's generally five votes in favor, but, you know, if the minority were to prevail, the fire service would not be able to be provided.
Law enforcement needs fire.
So, okay.
Also need the ambulance.
All right.
Fire responders.
Let's continue. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, since that was directed to me, may I offer an observation?
Sure.
And you're absolutely right, but, Mr. Chairman, if we had had these conversations earlier on in the budget process to sort them out and have a better understanding, then I think it would be easier to move forward for me. I'm not saying that I disagree with Commissioner O'Hare or agree with her, but the interactions that we have to meaningfully look at the budget has been a challenge for years, and this time around, since there's not been a pre-meeting or an introductory meeting to go over the budget of these departments, it's very problematic.
Okay. Well, I know you're, I would not argue, but I know you're focused on details, and that's fine. So anyway, there is an opportunity to visit beforehand. Ms. Fast.
Yeah, you have never supported the fire in your 12 years. You have never voted for the budget in 12 years.
Let's go on.
So, and we all have input on the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Chairman, as a clerk, I must ask for a five-minute break, please.
All right, so noted. The clerk asked for a five-minute break. We'll take a five-minute break and come back.
Thank you.
All right, we will reconvene from our recess. Next item on our agenda.
Item number seven, resolution number zero six three dash two two, consider approving the fiscal year 2023 budget for Consolidated Fire District Number Two and adopting resolution number zero six three dash two two.
Ms. Clarence.
Good morning. This is the statutorily required budget approval by B O C C for Consolidated Fire District Number Two's budget. The expenses increased by about $2.26 million for reserves and employee benefits primarily. Ad valorem taxes increased by about $1.15 million, and the assessed valuation would decrease by zero, estimated by 0.3. I'll let Chief Chick discuss the budget now.
Morning, Chief.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak to you.
Check the microphone. Can you pull it closer? Is it on? Testing? All right, there it is. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I would also like to thank, first of all, our board, who you all appoint, who has worked with us seamlessly to try and come up with a budget for this year and the coming years, and both Ted and Robin and folks from Budget that have been very instrumental in helping us put everything together for this presentation and for the budget process. So I'll start by saying that C F D Two has taken a different approach the last couple of years with our board in that, you know, we have our regular meetings, but we also have some work group meetings where we're trying to make sure that the board understands how things operate, where money's going, what's important to the district to survive in the long term. And so we've interacted with our board on many mission-critical topics over the last couple of years, like financial health, employment, climate, those kind of things. Just to give you an idea, and nobody's mentioned this yet, but I would like to give you guys a glimpse of the challenges that we're facing with employment. First of all, we're a destination department for the most part. People like to and aspire to work at C F D Two, and I'm proud of that. That's not the work that I've done. That's the work that many people from the 1950s forward have done and built a legacy at our organization. But we are used to getting between 50 and 70 applicants for one firefighter position. We just held a hiring process recently and got 14 applicants for three firefighter positions. And so what, the reason I say that to you is that the organizations in this county are struggling right now to get enough applicants to do the job that we're doing. And in order to remain competitive, we're having to increase benefits, we're having to increase pay. We're 20,000 below what other metro areas like Dallas and Des Moines are paying for starting salaries for firefighters in Kansas City right now. So. are paying for starting salaries for firefighters in Kansas City right now. So just to give you an idea, there are many other challenges that relate to employing firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics that don't get mentioned among these budget discussions. And I think that's important to resonate with you, is that we're doing our best to bring you budgets that are realistic, but they're certainly less than what we'd like to see because of the fact that we're having employment challenges, just like every other sector.
Thank you.
So, so this year, one of the things that we had in our budget proposal for the board was that we had no supplementary, you know, match for our supplementary retirement. So we have a 457. We have our regular Kansas Police and Fire Pension, which most organizations in Johnson County, in fact, all fire organizations in Johnson County have now. And most of our competitors have a 457 supplementary retirement where your employees can put money away either pre or post-tax and save for their retirement. That's an important component because we are on a defined benefit pension plan, and that means that the day we retire, that's the amount of money we're going to make for the rest of our lives. And so if we live another 20 years, obviously, we're not going to be able to, with inflation, survive on what our pension is. And so Johnson County Med Act, most of the other fire organizations, notwithstanding Northwest Consolidated, who I live in their district, and they've had many, many challenges to drag themselves out of the dark ages, and Chief Max has done a wonderful job, and I'm glad he serves my community. But, you know, those, those costs are looked at by employees. And so we didn't have a supplementary match, and we proposed one this year for our employees and had a lot of discussion with our board about this. And there were many different viewpoints on, ultimately, our board approved this. And, you know, the challenges with employment are just remaining competitive and making sure that we can hire the best employees to serve the, you know, the eight cities in northeast Johnson County as we are charged. So CFD Two continues to collaborate with many other people in the county. Our other fire and EMS organizations throughout Johnson County, whether it be Med Act or other fire departments or other fire districts, this year, we logged nearly 1,000 hours of collaborative training with our partners in Johnson County. And the reason I bring that number up is that that's, those trainings do two things. Number one, it's, it creates a seamless environment when we get on scene, and we're looking at, you know, expanding that to other organizations that we partner with. Additionally, we teach things that we may be the subject matter experts on. For instance, trench rescue, that's something that we're, us and Alath are the only two people in the county that are tasked with that. And so we go to other organizations, and we do training to teach them what to do before we get there and how to best mitigate that emergency until we're on scene and we can, you know, we can take over. So those kind of things have been, you know, a focus of Commissioner Ashcraft in those collaborations. And so I think that when you look at the fact that nearly 10% of our training this year existed with other organizations, that's a, that's a statement of the kind of collaboration we're doing within the county right now. We're looking at some more progressive ideas, maybe a little bit more robust collaboration on specialty functions related to trench rescue and structural collapse and those kind of things. And so those are talks that are being initiated right now, and I look forward to where they're going to take us and being able to report to you on those things in the future. We're nearing maturity with our advanced life support, first response component. This is very important. We had the vision to put ALS in place, and there were a lot of people who questioned that vision initially. And there's always room for a difference of opinion, but I think that we, with the challenges that our partners at Med Act have seen with staffing and retaining good employees and having to, you know, to hire EMTs to get on the ambulances instead of two paramedics on an ambulance. Now, some ambulances, it's an EMT and a paramedic. Just for your edification, the, there are some protocols, medical protocols in this county that require two paramedics in the back to take care of somebody on the way to the hospital. And those are certain etiologies in certain, you know, critical situations. But in a situation where a Med Act ambulance shows up with a paramedic and an EMT, my organization is able to put a paramedic in the back of that ambulance because of the investment we've made and take care of that patient the way that the protocol calls for it, and we're able to go to the hospital and do that right. So fortunately, we've had the luxury to build that program out. We anticipate that that program is going to reach maturity next year as we graduate the final two members that we've put through paramedic school from their educations. So our goal is to deliver consistent ALS responses in our, in our area in under five minutes and 20 seconds on all of our EMS scenes, and we're going to reach that by next year. So CFD Two, again, comes with a mill levy reduction for the third consecutive year. No question, we've exceeded the revenue neutral rate. I won't argue that point. When 80% of your budget is related to employment and staffing costs, and you've got an 8.7% or 8.9% CPI in fuel costs and in energy costs and grocery costs going up like they are right now, we've got to take care of people or we don't have anybody to run emergency calls. And so, yes, the budget did go up this year, and I think it's only natural in these economic climates that it does. Remember, we don't get any public safety sales tax like the cities. The fire districts were excluded from those things. There were more federal funds available in the cities than the fire districts had available to them. The, so when we come with a 1.275 mil reduction over the last three years, that's a big number for us. That's a significant decrease. And yes, the budget has gone up, but yes, we've also dropped the mill levy and tried to give as much money back to the taxpayers as we can on an annual basis. So last year, we were essentially revenue neutral. We were able to come in essentially $1,000 or $1,500 over. That was really for statutory reasons, and our board advised us that, you know, that was the best move the first year of all this revenue neutral rate stuff. So I'll briefly mention that TIF is a challenge for all fire districts and emergency services. It's been discussed here. We understand the importance of economic development and all those things, but CFD Two has looked at it a little differently this year. We entered discussions with the city of Fairway on a new development that they've got going in. They're taking out some older, you know, commercial buildings, and they're going to be putting in a 55 and older active adult community, which is obviously going to impact our responses and the number of responses we make to what previously was a very low response area and is now probably going to be a much more utilized area. So, you know, we, we worked with them, and we were able to come up with some additional funding for the police department and first response fire and EMS that will help us to, it certainly doesn't replace the cost, but it helps us offset the impact of the TIF. And so that model is new. That was at the encouragement of our board. We had several board members who asked us to be very active in the TIF discussion with the cities, and we were able to do so, and I'm proud of the step that we've made there. It's not perfect, but it's a step in the right direction, for sure.
Very good.
So CFD Two, challenges that we've got facing us, we do have one station, it's three years old, very nice station that, that we're enjoying right now, but we do have two aging facilities, and we're planning renovations that'll start in 2023 at Station 22 and then Station 21, which is our oldest facility. We'll get some renovations a couple of years later. When you look at the overall budget and the number of, the amount of money we have in reserves, some of that money is in reserves because we're going to pay cash for these renovations rather than float a bond issue. And so we sold some property. We kept that money and put it in reserves so that we could use that to improve the properties that we own that need some attention. And so two years later, that's coming to fruition. We plan to revisit our mission, vision, and values in 2023 while we establish a new strategic plan. We're going to seek input from our representatives from all eight cities and the communities we serve. We take that very seriously, and their confidence in the work that we do, we enjoy a great deal of, you know, public confidence, and we look forward to using them to help us set our goals for the future. We're going to continue to evaluate fire company staffing. One of the things that I would point out to the commission is that the, the performance measures that we're graded against and that we're asked questions about are based on a four-person response to emergencies. Most of us have a three-person response. So if we're following the performance measures and the requirements and the guidelines that are set aside by these performance measures, there's a 25% increase in staffing costs on our fire engines in order to get there. So I just want to point out that, that if we're, if we're looking at performance measures and when we're talking about those performance measures being valid and accurate, then staffing has to be considered in that. So when you look at the work that's done by aerial companies and other things, sometimes those are very labor-intensive. And if you, if an aerial company arrives on scene first for some of these emergencies, you don't have enough people to get things set up with a three-person company. And so just mentioned to you that that's something we'll continue to evaluate as we look into the future. So we continue to be fiscally responsible. Again, this year, we received the highest possible rating awarded from our annual audit, and we follow the policies that are in place to protect public dollars, and we take that very seriously. My staff is, is committed to being good stewards of the public dollars, and we take that, that charge quite seriously on a daily basis. Our employee turnover is quite low, which helps control onboarding costs, and it keeps experienced professionals on the streets serving the communities that we serve, and that is very, very important to the mission that we have to carry out. Our trending hours are exceeding our goals. Collaborative efforts are strong. We remain an ISO Class One, one of 411 ISO Class Ones in the United States out of 50,000 fire organizations. So I think that that speaks for itself in the money that our taxpayers enjoy, reduce, reduction in insurance costs. So CFD Two, again, for the third year in a row, comes with a drop in the mill levy, total of 1.275 mils. And I would point out that over the last four years, we've seen a 26.73% increase in property values in our district. We've only realized a 14.74% increase in budgetary dollars over the same period. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions of the chief. Ms. O'Hara.
Can you repeat that? You said the valuations have gone up 26.
26.73%.
And your expenditures?
14.74%.
Okay, and that's over the three years, did you say?
It's over a four-year period.
Four years. Okay, and how much over revenue neutral are you?
Let me give you that real quick. I have it here. So the revenue neutral rate for us would be 9.765, and the published tax levy is 10.475. So roughly 1.6 or 7 mils there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you for your presentation. A couple of clarifications, if I could.
Sure.
I believe you indicated that, and I commend you for attempting to put together a strategic plan with your community partners, especially with that kind of dynamic, that makes a lot of sense. But when you were talking about that, you had indicated that you felt that public confidence in your services were high, and I'm not disputing that, but on your scorecard, you've got those, based on public education events, somewhat less than optimized. So can you explain what you're, what you were saying versus what's presented here?
So to begin with, the scorecard is provided to us by county, and they loosely tied public confidence to some of these areas. But we very clearly, in all the fire districts together, am I wrong, chiefs? We very clearly said that's a loose tie. What, what we're saying is that during COVID, it was very hard to do the public education events and the school visits, and I mean, it just wasn't allowed. But we developed videos for the schools. We still carried out Fire Prevention Week in all of our schools remotely. We were able to do that through video, you know. But the, the measure itself calls for a number of contacts in public education, and so it's really not a valid measure from the standpoint of the pandemic.
Fair enough, fair enough. Well, also on the scorecard, and maybe this is just a typo, it has provide effective fire suppression services as a new measure. That, that can't be true.
So nobody, until it started being asked a couple of years ago, measured the number of fires confined to the room of origin. Let's be frank, no fire is confined to the room of origin as far as damage is considered, because if there's a fire, there's smoke damage and water damage that happens as a result of extinguishing that fire, no matter where it happens. So it's really a performance measure that's very hard for us to buy into because it doesn't really accurately represent how the job's done.
Okay. And to follow on, you had indicated, talked about the collaboration efforts, particularly in training that
Sir.
have been involved in. I have mentioned to the other chiefs encouraging consideration in terms of equipment acquisition and management. I hope you will consider that, but I
Might I respond to that?
Absolutely.
A couple of things. First of all, we buy on a purchasing cooperative through the Houston-Galveston area contract, and so those are negotiated prices through many, many fire departments that are built into a consortium of purchasing. And so that's, that's one area we are trying to take every advantage. Second thing is that through maintenance, we do our own fleet maintenance. My firefighters change the oil and do the, we have people certified to do the brakes and take care of the steering and electrics and those kind of things. We mow our lawns. We clean our stations. That's not the case with every fire organization, okay? And so there are a lot of savings realized in the district because we have people doing our own thing. And even if I have to pay a firefighter overtime to do some mechanical work on a fire truck, I'm not paying $150 an hour at MHC. And so those are, those are things that we're already doing that don't get seen and don't get showcased.
Very good. Well, thank you for pointing that out. Good point. One last question, then. Do you have any information related to the span of control and the ratio of chiefs to firefighters in your operation?
You want to talk about administratively, or you want to talk about my shift chiefs that are operational?
Well, my question's more geared towards some kind of standardized understanding between the departments. I appreciate the fact that you've got to dissect it a couple of different ways, so I appreciate.
We do look at that. We're the, outside of Northwest, who doesn't, doesn't have the same number of years of full-time development that we do, but certainly is working that direction. Outside of Northwest, we're the smallest staff in the county. And so we have 6.9% of our staff is administrative chief staff, and 11% includes my operational chief staff.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to be a broken record, but I want to applaud you and your team and all the chiefs working together because in the reality, that helps save money. It's training, and I applaud you for that. And I also am happy to hear that when there are incentives going on, that you're going to the table, because if you don't come up to the table, you're going to be behind. And so I know these guys have done it, and that's important to do, to get with your mayor. And I know Commissioner Bass has a good relationship with him. If you need a phone number, I'm sure she can provide you with the cell number or something. But anyway, thank you for all you do and taking care of us.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Chief, thank you for your report. It was a very solid report, as all of our chiefs gave solid reports today. I think if people are listening closely, what you're hearing from all of our chiefs is that balance. You have to have balance. You have people's needs. You have, you have fire needs. You have constituent needs, and everybody's trying to be responsible and have fiscal responsibility, along with protecting their departments and our citizens with the level of service that's required. And I think that's the same thing that we do up here as a board. We have to look at all of those situations, just as you have explained, through all of our departments across the county, and you try to come up and do the best you can with that balance. I know a long time ago, I was with the city of Shawnee, and I can remember back in the day when I was a councilman and I was a mayor, and people had come forward, and our police chief and our fire chiefs would come before us, and we're losing personnel. We're losing personnel. We're losing personnel to Lenexa, to Oval Park, to Johnson County. Our firefighters are going to Johnson County or to the Sheriff's Department. Our police department is going to Johnson County Sheriff's Department or other cities. And Shawnee turned it around, and now people are saying, our firefighters or our policemen are going to the city of Shawnee. And, and so there were steps that have to be taken, and there are steps that need to be taken here in the county as well to get back. And, but you brought up one of the situations that I'll say is really important for people to understand. You know, when I, when I was a beginning teacher, I probably went up against 200 applicants. I would like to say it was even closer to 400 applicants. That's not where education's at today. They can't find the applicants to fill the positions. And so when you talk about going down to 14 applicants for three positions, sometimes we're having a difficult we're having a difficulty of the people that are out there wanting or have the requirements to accept the positions that we have open. And that's something that's happening. You know, I hate to say it, I'm a baby boomer, but baby boomers are retiring, and trying to fill a lot of those positions is becoming difficult. Now, that's not the only reason why, and we've already talked about a lot of the other situations that are before us. But again, I want to commend all of our chiefs, everyone that's working. You know, there's no, I've said this many times, there's no bigger priority to me than safety services. And that includes a lot of different people in this, in Johnson County. And of course, there's needs that we've heard from departments across the board in this county, and we're taking steps to try to rectify those things and make them better. But I will say this, the services that are being provided to our residents are exceptional in my mind. And not that they can't be better, they've got to be better. We keep working towards that goal. But we are doing, again, our safety services, whether it's fire, whether it's Sheriff's Department, whether it's MEDAC, all of our safety services, parks, parks, police, everybody is doing commendable jobs, and I just think that needs to be put out there. But there also has to be that balance and that realization of what is reasonable and what can take place.
Okay, thank you. Other questions to the chief? Ms. O'Hara.
On the 457 plan-
Yes, ma'am.
In the budget year of 2022, you didn't have a match, you just had it set up that they could-
Employer only contribution.
And how much did you increase? What is your match?
So, our match is a stair-step match. It's four, five, and six, depending on years of service.
So, 4%, 5%?
4%, 5%, 6% maximum.
That, how much did that add to your budget?
About $284,000. So, if you look at it in context of what we're seeing with other people, I believe that Leewood told us yesterday, they're going to increase their, some of their firefighter salaries, and specifically, the line salaries by as much as 18%. We have a 3% placeholder for raises this year, which we kept down, because we knew that the 401A or the 457 match was going to cost money. Again, we tried to find balance, we tried to bring a budget that was reasonable, and so essentially, you're about 3% for the placeholder and the raise, and about another 3% for the 457 program.
Okay, so, on participation rates, what are you anticipating? Participation rates, obviously, the higher the salary, the higher the participation rate, because in the lower levels of compensation, those folks need every dollar that they can get to take home.
Yep.
And that's a real unfortunate reality.
Fortunately, we budgeted for worst-case scenario, so we budgeted as if every person in the organization took advantage of the match, and we've worked really hard. I think it's our obligation as an employer to try and encourage our people to take those matches and take the opportunity to plan for their retirement. Give you an example, I've got a retiree who lives in Mission right now, who's been retired for 30 years, and he's driving a bus for a developmentally disabled child, because he can't make it, he can't survive on what his retirement is, and there was no match when he, and we don't have social security, by the way. Taxpayers in Northeast Johnson County save 7.2% because we don't pay social security. So, this is a very cost-effective move to encourage the long-term health and well-being of finances of our retirees.
Yes, and I have been talking to folks on fixed incomes as I'm visiting with them, and this is, as Commissioner Myers said, this is a real balancing act, because actually, it's property taxes is one of the huge burdens that is on the backs of these folks that are, they're retired, they're on a fixed income, and every year, our taxes go up and up and up. But one other question. So, Fairway is putting in a residential 55-plus development, is that-
Yes, ma'am, they call it an active adult community.
And that's coming in under a tax increment finance district?
That is correct.
Okay.
And of course, that truly is, you are going to be required to provide more services, and that tax base is going to be very limited. And I think, I just want the fire chiefs to understand, I'm not voting against your departments, I am voting against this public policy that's starving your departments, and that is these tax increment finance districts and these industrial revenue bonds. It's undermining our tax base, and it's putting the burden on the rest of the taxpayers. I mean, we've had our appraiser come in and say, yes, every time there is a tax incentive, it redistributes the burden on the rest of the tax base. And when are we going to wake up and say, these projects are going to come here anyway, because we're a great place to work, we're a great place to do business? And it's really, really cutting in on our tax base and increasing taxes for everyone, so.
And I think it's challenging for all of us. We were in a situation where we're all making choices to try and bring a realistic, balanced budget. Back to you, I think the danger is, when you have a couple more people who are making votes for public safety based on TIFs and IRBs and not public safety itself, then what happens when our budget doesn't get approved? That's the danger we're in.
Right. Ms. Fast.
Yeah, I mean, when I call 911, I want you to be there.
I'm proud to be there.
Yes, and that is so important to my residents, and they, I mean, there is, I've never had a resident say to me, "Please do not support the fire district's budget, because there's a TIF involved." They want that under five minutes to know that their loved one's life will be saved. I was a frontline hospice social worker and saw how critical the collaboration between law enforcement, public safety, and that includes ambulance, 911, and fire district. So, you say here, you have five minutes, 20 seconds for ALS. What is your response for non-ALS, and how does that compare to the nation?
So, I'd have to go back and look at some performance measures. I wouldn't have those specific, you know, metrics for you today, but I can tell you that, right now, our average first response time is about four minutes and three seconds for BLS.
Which is probably one of the top in the nation.
Pretty good.
I would say. And I know you meet with all my city councils, and I appreciate that, and collaborate with the mayors. I meet with the mayors monthly, and we talk about the fire district, and I rarely hear a complaint about the fire district. And I work with the mayors to get appointments on your board, and I know you've spent a lot of weeks wrangling about cost efficiency and how you can deliver more value per each tax dollar for the fire district, and I thank you. Also, thank you, I've brought up with you about the traumatic stress of your fire workers. Do they work more than 36 hours? Isn't that the standard?
So, no, that's a standard that, you know, I think Johnson County MEDAC uses 36 hours for transporting ambulances, but, you know, we have a 72-hour maximum that any fire personnel can work. We don't broach that either, it's a hard line for us. So, fortunately, you know, unless you're up fighting a fire, you know, the difference is that, you know, the ambulance may be out at the hospital, stuck waiting on beds and things like that, it's a little different situation. But, you know, we feel very comfortable. The other thing is, we make decisions based on the business of the unit for a prior day. So, if we've got a firefighter who's been up all night, we'll encourage him not to take overtime or pick up an extra shift, because it's not the right thing to do for the public.
Thank you, and thank you for your working collaboration with mental health. That is another tax savings at any call that our mental health mobile unit can go to instead of fire, police, ambulance. That is another, and it's better quality services and getting people the services they need. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for your support, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, this is probably Mark's question for Mr. Clemens, but as I'm looking at Fire District Number Two's budget, I just think it's important to point out that not 100% of your budget comes from ad valorem taxes. There are other revenue sources in there, and I don't know if Mr. Clemens might be able to just talk about that a little-
Are we related? Are we talking about? We have, we own a cell phone tower that's on the property at Station 22, and we lease spots on that tower, and so we have about $190,000 in revenue realized from that on an annual basis, depending on if it's full and if those contracts are, and all of those contracts are on escalators, so. Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead, buddy.
Those are additional comments, Ms. Clemens.
So, yes, one of the documents that all four of the fire districts have is a proposed budget summary, and so there are property tax, and then there's the motor vehicle recreation taxes, and there's an other income section, which is, and then there's a cell tower section of almost $200,000. There's interest, and there's also permit fees. So, there's, the districts, yeah, have a number of revenues typically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion when we're ready.
All right, Ms. O'Hara, you have another question?
Yes, I just wanted you to go back and explain to me how you have sold properties and that you have worked on cash rather than going out for bonds?
So, when we built our new Station Three, that was a $6 million project. I'm glad we built it before the costs went up, because it saved the taxpayers a lot of money, and that's at the board's approval, thank you. But we sold our old Station Three. Our standard of cover, which we did as part of the service to the community, said that in order to serve the people in our district more effectively, we needed to move that fire station north. And so, we located a suitable location, we improved our response times by moving that fire station north, and we had the old station that we were able to sell. Sold it for a very reasonable amount of money to Johnson County MEDAC, who put an ambulance in there, because they have to respond, not just in our district, but in Leewood and Oval Park from there as well. And so, it fit for their need. Additionally, they're able to have additional housing for some of their ready units, and so it was a great opportunity for us to sell the property to somebody else who had a great need for it. We took that money, put it in our reserve. We had planned to try and remodel Station Two, because we literally have our battalion chiefs sleeping on a bed next to the three desks in their office, and we're packed to the gills there. It was too small when we built it back in the late 90s. And so, we had a plan to renovate that station, but we wanted to take a better look at it and consider all the alternatives, and so we slowed things down just a touch, did a little bit deeper dive to figure out if there's anything that was cost-effective that would serve the community better. We've just completed that process, we're getting ready to meet with the board and talk to them about moving forward on the renovations at Station 22.
And that will be done with cash?
Yeah, we anticipate not having to float any bond issues. Nice thing about having a little bit of money, that we, you know, like selling that property and put it in reserve for a year or two, knowing that we needed to use that money to renovate the property at Station 22, is that we didn't have to pay the bond issuance fees, we don't have to pay the interest on those bonds, and we do get beat up a little bit on having too much money in reserves sometimes, but the reality is that we're saving the taxpayers' dollars by not issuing bonds and paying interest on those bonds by carrying a little bit of reserve.
Just refresh my memory, is what is your mill levy for the fire protection?
10.475. This is the proposed, ma'am.
And that is reduced by one point?
It's reduced by .3 over last year. Over the last four years, it's 1.275.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? If not, it's back before the commission, Ms. Fast. You have a motion?
I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 budgets for Consolidated Fire District Number Two and adopt Resolution Number 063-22.
Myers, second. Fast made the motion, Myers seconded the motion to approve the Consolidated Fire District Number Two's budget as presented. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My vote will reflect the same concerns that I had on the previous items.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara. Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes, because of, because of, I am very conflicted on this. I am very appreciative of all of their cost-saving, cost-saving strategies. It's just, it's very difficult.
Yes or no?
I am conflicted. Because it exceeds the revenue neutral, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you.
So noted, next.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Aye.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor, one opposed, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number eight, Resolution Number 060-22. Consider approving the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Johnson County Fire District Number Two and adopting Resolution Number 060-22.
Ms. Clemens.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. This is the approval of the Johnson County Fire District Number Two budget by the BOCC. They, their expenses increased by about $2.15 million. This is for reserves that they don't plan to spend next year generally, and caper's annual liability payment, which was last year. Ad valorem taxes increased by $281,000, which is due to debt service fund mostly, and the mill levy is lower by 0.915. I'll let Chief Francis discuss now.
Chief, I'm still going to call you chief, once a chief, always a chief. So, Chief Francis?
I was going to say good morning, but good afternoon, Jim Francis, Fire Services Administrator. So, obviously, you guys know more about us, because you serve as our governing body, but, you know, three years ago, came to this body with this transition plan, and it's refreshing now, we're nine months into this, and I should point out, I've got two of our contracting partners here today. You've already talked to Chief Myers, and Chief Diener from Oval Park is also here. So, I need to thank both of them and their departments and staff for the work they've done to make our transition very successful. So, thank you to both of them. We had a tremendous financial need forecasted three years ago, is why we came up with this transition plan. So, we're in it now, and it's nice to see that our plan is working well operationally. And so, let me go through some of the things, you know, the key point here, we did identify that we were going to have to do something because of our shortfall of revenue that was going to start this year of roughly $1.5 million, and we took those actions to contract out services. So, the transition service plan did go into effect on November 28th of last year. One of the big things we did to reduce expenses was the fleet replacement, which included dropping one truck off of that because of the transition. Had we not transitioned, we would have needed one additional pumper truck at $900,000, so that was savings. We sold the fire station in 191st and Lackman. We saved approximately $60,000 in annual operating expense by closing that station. We sold the station, we used part of the proceeds from that sale to pay off some caper's liability of $440,000. And the responsible financial management, really, this plan has been in the works for several years, knowing that we had this shortage of revenue coming. So, there was a rearranging of finances for the district, which included the fleet replacement and how this was done. We ended up, at the end of this year, with approximately $2.7 million in reserves, that's more than we probably had, but we do have a plan because of a need within the Spring Hill Fire Station to address and spending cash for some of those to upgrade that facility. The big thing that's happened lately is the equalization of fire service mill levy with the city of Spring Hill. the equalization of fire service mill levy with the city of Spring Hill. That's on your agenda next week for this board to approve, but that finally, after years, is equalizing the payment, Spring Hill's payment to the Fire District's general fund mill levy. So the challenges we have with the Spring Hill Station, we really have a, a need for additional apparatus base space, and we're, we're, housing of personnel, we're at maximum capacity. And we really do not have adequate facilities for female firefighters and paramedics. That has to be addressed and soon. Talked about Spring Hill already. The ultimate goal with Spring Hill is to have them join the district hopefully next year and eliminate the need to contract. And then consider in 2025 transferring territory of Fire District Two into Fire District One west of Lackman in 2025. So the fleet, the fleet was ordered for replacement. I just returned from an inspection on a tanker truck that was ordered nearly two years ago. It'll finally be in town this week. The district paid with reserve funds for that. We did bond three engines and the latter truck for approximately $3.5 million. So when we get through with this, when the trucks, new trucks are here, which will hopefully be sometime late next summer, the district will be sitting in really good position as far as fleet. I don't think we'll have anything that will be older than about two or three years at that point. So we're in really good position there. Happy to announce the response time analysis that's been done so far is that our response times are consistent now with the new contracting partners as they were before the transition. I will tell you that I'm working diligently to standardize data. So we're looking at apples to apples when we're comparing history of Fire District Two data and moving forward to the data from Fire District One and Oval and Park. Stand for any questions anyone may have.
Any questions? Ms. O'Hara?
Can you, can you go back and revisit that you said that the area west of Lackman is going to be transferred to?
Yes. What, when I came up with the transition plan three years ago, the intent was to have a contract with Fire District One for approximately two to three years at the max. Beyond that, if the revenue generated from the territory west of Lackman would pay for the employees that Fire District Two is funding at District One, there would be consideration to transfer that territory west of Lackman into Fire District One's taxing authority. That would eliminate the need for a contract. Right now, Fire District Two owns the fire station and the assets in that, and the ownership of those would have to transfer to Fire District One if that were to occur.
What's the difference between the mill levy of Fire District Two and Fire District One?
Our District One's general fund levy is 13.582, I believe, is what is proposed for next year. Fire District Two's next year is 14.125.
And then you both have bond?
Yes, but the bond debt stays with the territory. So there would not be any new bond debt taken on for the people west of Lackman. They would not inherit District One's bond debt and vice versa.
Okay.
The bond debt stays with the territory until the bond's paid off.
Okay. I'm asking these questions because, you know, this, this consolidation in contracting, I was very concerned about the impact on the property taxes for the people within the fire district because, and it, there's not that many folks out there in the rural areas. And it's, it's, it's very important that we look to ensure that they're not going to have a, a huge shock in their fire district.
Understand.
Okay, thank you.
And I should note that out of our 12% assessed valuation increase, Fire District Two had approximately 4 million of that, or 13% of that was new development.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank you again. I have to say, every time I see your name or I see you, I want to go to John Francis's restaurant. Growing up, that brings back a lot of great memories, especially the salad was awesome. But anyway, I, I know you've been working on this three years, and Commissioner Myers and myself sat through your training when we first came on board, and it was very extensive. And I know you have been working on this, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. And, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I have a motion.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, a motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 budgets for Johnson County Fire District Number Two and adopt Resolution Number 060-22.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the 2023 budget for District Number Two. Any further questions or comments? If not, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. Have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Well, thank you all very much, Chiefs, supporting staff for being here, and appreciate the good work that you do. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number nine, Resolution Number 064-22. Consider approving and adopting Resolution Number 064-22, adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget and FY 2023-2027 capital improvement program as proposed.
Ms. Simms?
Good afternoon. Robin Simms with the Budget Financial Planning Department. Staff began the budget process in December of last year and began meeting with the board from March through August of this year. Today is the culmination of that work. And with that, we have a proposed budget of 1.6 billion. 1.1 billion of that is expenditures and 488, 88 million are reserves. Total estimated published county mill levy is 24.542 mils. However, after the pending, pending exemptions from now until the end of October, the assessed valuation is estimated to decrease, which will cause the mill levy to increase to 24, approximately 24.568 mils, which gets us to our approximate one-mill levy reduction that we discussed. There's a 2% market adjustment and a 3% merit pool included for county staff, and that's to address employment market that we've been facing. There's also a maximum FTE of 4,198.24. Fiscal year 2023 CIP is 264 million. And we did have a public hearing for the 2023 proposed budget and revenue neutral rate on August 22nd. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the county manager just for a few comments.
Thank you, Robin. I am proud to put forward this budget. I know we've spent many months covering this, but I feel like it addresses what the community needs, is fiscally responsible, and also looks out for our workforce and organization. So through the lens of, for the community, obviously, we want to continue to provide quality services. I feel like this budget does that. Our community expects and deserves the quality services that we have put forward to date, moving forward. As a reminder, the Community Satisfaction Survey put us in the top 20 in the nation and the only county that has that distinction. We also looked at the community survey and your board priorities for the few positions that we were able to add in this recommended budget. We also considered the community in looking at the one-mill rollback. Five of six budgets, of the last six budgets, have had a rollback. This is the largest one, acknowledging that there is an increase in assessed valuation, and we try to balance that with fiscal stewardship and services. Speaking of financial stewardship, as evidenced by our AAA bond rating, our triple-triple-A bond rating that is a distinction that only 2% of all counties can, can say that they have the top credit rating. That looks, is because we do, we look out five years and we have adequate reserves to weather things like what the economy may do in the near future or, as evidenced in the past, or looking at continuing to address workforce issues that we know that we have put in this budget, a focus on workforce issues, but we're not done. We still have work to do, and we've been having those discussions. So looking at taking care of our organization, our employees, the community and fiscal stewardship, I feel like this has that right balance. And I'm proud to put this forward to you all as a recommended budget. I would like to say a special thanks to the Budget Office, to the County Manager's Office, to the departments and staff who's, who've worked really hard to be able to put this forward to you as a team. And also, thank you to the many hours that the board has put into the meetings over the last few months and many discussions and questions and, that we've had during this time. So with that, we stand for questions.
Questions of the staff. All right. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this item?
Sir?
Excuse me?
Sir, we have one online.
Okay, very good.
We have Claire, Claire Reagan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Great. My name's Claire Reagan. I'm a proud Johnson County resident and taxpayer. I live at 17673 West 156th Street in Olathe. My husband and I moved here from the Missouri side 10 years ago as newlyweds. We are now raising our three children in Olathe. Personally, I'm a 2019 graduate of the Johnson County Citizens Academy and a 2022 graduate of Leadership Olathe. These experiences underscored for me how fortunate we are here in Johnson County. Even though my family is feeling the weight of inflation and increasing property assessments, we value the quality of services and the high quality of life we have here in Johnson County. Our little ones particularly enjoy our amazing libraries and parks. I can appreciate the balance you must find in keeping tax rates reasonable while also providing our community with the services we expect. These services have existed over generations. County residents have been prioritizing them for decades. People choose to live here because of the high quality of life, which is propelled by high-quality county services and our highly qualified professional staff. Please don't risk adding reduced services and lower resident satisfaction and increased emergency response times to the stress of fluctuating inflation. While lowering the mill levy beyond the currently proposed decrease of one mil sounds good on the surface, there will be long-term consequences to our county's ability to fund necessary future projects. And as you well know, and as we just heard from all the fire chiefs, the county is also impacted by inflation as costs for fuel, supplies, personnel, and capital projects have all gone up. In Leadership Olathe, I learned what attracts companies and businesses who, who come here and expand our tax base. It's a pretty close tie between our amazing public schools as well as the quality of life we offer their employees. We must fund what makes our county such a wonderful place to live and work. I trust you will do what's best for today and for tomorrow. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. If not, the item is back before the commission, and a motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 064-22, adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget and FY 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program as proposed.
Allenbrand, second.
Hanslick made the motion. Allenbrand seconded the motion to approve the resolution and the fiscal 2023 year budget and CIP program as presented. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
Yes. So I have, I have gone through this, this budget many times, and I just want to summarize what I have, I have found. There was, there was one mention of retirement fund, funds unfunded liability of $111,106,64, and that was under the capers. And staff assured me that that is a liability that is the state's responsibility, but is it a requirement that we have that in our budget? I also want to emphasize that this budget increases the match on supplemental retirement funds from 3% to 4%, and that is a $1.5 million increase in that cost. I want to also quote from the document that residents consistently give high marks to the community survey about public safety services in Johnson County. 94% reported in an overall feeling of safety in the county. And the, this is a, quote, "This is an area of government where it is crucial to invest." And so my question is, why are we not adequately funding the Sheriff's Department? From Tom Dugan in the Sheriff's Department, "Right now, nearly all the deputies work overtime, and they are required to work 12 hours of overtime per pay period or every two weeks. The current overtime cost for 2022 is approximately $8.4 million." And we have been talking about, about the Sheriff's Department for several weeks now, and it is now to a point of crisis because the sheriff is now down 60 deputies. And so I just want to emphasize that the sheriff's budget from 2021 to 2023 increased 10.9%. And I want to give examples of other departments. The B.O.C.C. increased 19%. The budget in finance and planning, 14.3%. The county manager's office, 18.1%. Communications and media, 18.9%. Risk management, 56.5%. Tech and innovation, 28.4%. Justice information management systems, 42.6%. Appraiser, closer to the, much closer to the sheriff's. That was 11.6%. Election office, 16.6%. The airport, 19.3%. Planning, housing, and community development, 32.6%. Transportation transit, 50.9%. I, it just goes on and on. Library operating is 24.9%. It's, it's obvious that the Sheriff's Department has not been adequately funded, and especially since we are down 15% of our force in vacancies. So I have gone and I've looked at, example, the, the Health Department. One of their, one of their requests is a program manager, population health, and health equity. That is a $98,500 position. And-
Is that total compensation? That's total comp, not the salary, just on a-
I'm sorry, total comp. Thank you, Robin, for correcting me that, of that. And, you know, we, we are talking about needs, and, and the, the Health Department, since COVID 2019, they have increased 35%. And, and yet, we are not adequately funding our sheriff's office. So I will have motions as we go forward on, on, another example is, is that we have six epidemiologists and a supervisor, and that is over a $700,000 cost. And it's somehow or another, we're going to have to get these costs back in line and be able to find the money to fund the sheriff's office. And now, after the discussions this morning, we actually have $288.4 million in reserves that have not been officially allocated. And, and, yes, we have to roll our mill levy back further because this is too much for our residents to absorb. I mean, we just continually increase, increase, increase. And there's, there's, in my estimation, there's a lot of bloat in this, in this budget.
Chairman?
All right.
If I could respond just really quickly to the percentage, I just want to make sure that we understand what we're comparing when we compare the departments.
Thank you.
Because your, the Commissioner O'Hara's numbers are comparing the 2021 actuals, or actual expenditures to the 2023 budget. So that's a two-year difference. And the diff, a lot of times, we like to compare budget to budget. When we compare actual, there may be changes. For example, within that increase, there are capital improvement projects that may be one-time, like for instance, DTI. They had several one-time capital projects in '23 that they did not have in '21. Also, if a grant's budgeted, but the, it's not fully spent, then that is shown up in 2021. But in '23, two years later, we, we would be showing the full budget of that grant. So included in those numbers are two years difference. It's not budget to budget. And it's also including CIP projects that are one-time grants- And it's also including CIP projects that are one-time grants and other items as well, and also shifts. So for example, County Manager's Office, their personnel budget may have gone up, but we actually took two FTE from the Treasury and Treasury Taxation and Vehicles, our clerk, to move them to CMO. So there was no increase in the total FTE. It was just a shift between departments for better management and better process.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, there's a lot of details within those increases.
I think that clarification is very, very important. Thank you very much. Other comments? I would make this comment additional. You know, our staff has been working with the Sheriff's Department staff now for several weeks or a couple of months, looking at compensation. And it is my plan that we will have a committee, the whole meeting, Thursday after, Thursday the 15th, after our regular meeting, and receive that report. My opinion is we do need to make steps to increase that pay scale. And so we will do that following the information that's presented to the committee, the whole. So I look forward to making those corrections. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern that we're not considering this within the, the budget discussions is that we're going to pass a very bloated, very, very bloated budget. And then we're going to have to add to that budget for the sheriff. And it, it seems to me that it would be much more prudent to go forward with this discussion and figure out how we're going to pay for this within the budget, so we're not going to be exploding it with additional expenses.
Well, if we take action today, that increases the sheriff's budget. The published budget is the maximum. We cannot increase it without having another public hearing and amending the budget. And that's, that's the process that's in place.
Correct. And so my suggestion was, is to roll back some of these expenditures, use some of the reserves, and not go, not, not exceed what the published budget is. In fact, I would, I would want to reduce the budget so that we are at least to revenue neutral.
I see. Do you know how much that would take? How much of a decrease?
For each mil, it's 13.1 million.
No, no, I'm asking the sheriff's budget if we were to decrease the current budget proposal.
Yes, he's, he's asking, he is asking for in 2023, 13 million. And then for the balance of 2022, 4 million is what I, what I have been told. But I have not, I've not heard that directly from staff. I've heard that from the sheriff, but I have not heard that directly from staff.
Well, again, back to my point, the committee, the whole, to have all this information presented, I think is appropriate. And so we also need information and update on our corrections. And we also need an update on MEDACT. And as the fire chiefs have indicated, you know, workforce is an issue for all of us across the board. So I anticipate that we will be able to address that at our committee, the whole meeting. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Sims, I really appreciate you clarifying that because it is frustrating as commissioners to set up here. We've been working on this budget since December, and we've been involved in many meetings, asking different question. We've had different departments come forward. And I wish that Commissioner O'Hara had spent that much time at the time which appropriate to ask these questions. So, you know, and then to hear a bunch of percentages and not comparing them to dollars amount is very frustrating because it's hard for us to go back and, and re, and rebut that. So I appreciate everything you're doing, Ms. Sims. I appreciate all the departments and what they've done. And I'm sorry this didn't happen during the appropriate time we were discussing the budgets.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's get a motion on the floor. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, thank you. Again, when, when the department heads came in, we were limited on the request for additional resources and that it takes three commissioners to be able to.
You're, you're speaking of the.
Yes.
Budget review.
Yes, the budget review, and it takes three commissioners to be able to take, take something and for discussion. And we do not have this ability to have a public discussion overall on the budget. Last year, I was criticized that I was not going to vote, vote for the budget, but yet I had no amendments to add when we were considering the budget. So here we are, and I have some amendments. And this is the only time that I have had the opportunity to do that. I think that we do need to revisit how our budget is put together as far as the participation of the commissioners. And that when we get a piece of paper and we get to check off yes, no, and if there's three commissioners that say yes, then we get to, to review it. And obviously with the votes five to two, probably my, my concerns are not going to be reviewed. So this is my opportunity, and I, I appreciate it. And we'll, we'll see if we can make some progress.
Well, again, there have been many other opportunities, respectfully, as the budget discussion occurred. And we had days where department directors presented their budget, the county manager presented the budget, all kinds of opportunity for commissioners to ask questions, to gain understanding. So there's been every opportunity for commissioners to participate, to ask questions, and to ask for clarification. That has always been the case, and I assume will be the case going forward. Do we have a motion on the?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Ms. Fast?
Yeah, I just would like to talk about, you know, we are the largest county in the state. We are in like the top 120th size of counties in the nation. I mean, so we are a growing county. I mean, and when I look, like 15 years ago, our population was 532,000. And we have the same number of FTEs as we did in 2008. So we've been efficient with our dollars. So we've gone up, you know, 80,000 people, you know, every 10 years we're going up without increasing FTEs. I mean, Jim Allen, former Commissioner Allen, I always loved what he would say. He said, "If we took our growth alone in population from 2008 to 2020, just the growth alone, we'd be in the top 10 county of size." So that growth would be the 10th largest county. That's how much we're growing, and we've kept our FTEs. They haven't grown. I know mental health, which I know really closely, they are still at where we were 10 years ago. And, and through my term, we've added on 30 positions because of they brought in so many mental health grant funds. But our growth is just significant, and we're dealing with major inflation. If we look at the inflationary growth, where would you see that we're at, Robin?
As far as FTE?
Well, I would say for the increases in our budget. I mean, inflation's, I mean, 8 to 12% this year, right?
Correct. Our ad valorem for '23 is increasing 5%.
Okay.
And our inflation right now is 8%.
Eight and a half.
Right. Okay. Any other comments?
All right, if, Mr. Ashcraft? This is on the motion.
This is on the motion, correct?
Well, I have a comment on the motion, but I wanted to offer a little bit of perspective. And Sheriff, I'll direct this to you, and if you want to correct me, please feel free. But even when you sat up here on the commission, we had, the county had a challenge with overtime costs. And over the years, there have been any number of adjustments. And part of the process a few years ago, Sheriff, was adding some staff to offset the overtime costs and try to equalize work. And that, I think that worked to a certain degree. But then the great resignation occurred. I mean, I'm not trying to trivialize it, but that and the pressures put upon law enforcement nationally in terms of the culture of expectation and stress has magnitude the issue, not just for you, okay, but you are who we're concerned about. But it, it's not like we are doing something right or wrong. It's, it's an environment of trying to attract and retain, and retain capable law enforcement and corrections in, in all the emergency services. But we're talking about law enforcement now. And, and Sheriff, I've heard you say, I think possibly the last time you were in front of us, we're in a bidding war for personnel, trained, competent, intentional personnel to do your job or do the job of the sheriff's office. And I don't disagree with the chairman. I think remuneration, pay inducements, monetary inducements are worthwhile. But I was going to ask you, Sheriff, are there other things we can do? And maybe that's such a holistic question, it can't be answered. But to make careers in law enforcement, particularly the sheriff's office, more attractive, and I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, but, you know, we can give you a million dollars or 10 million dollars, and then next year you'll be, I don't want you to be in the same position, but I've just seen that trend over time. And that's a big question. Any observations that you'd like to offer?
Absolutely. I mean, we've talked about, Commissioner Fast brought up a great point. County's grown to 610,000 people. In 2009, when I sat in that chair over there, the sheriff's office had 500, over 570 employees. Today, I, I am allotted 501. So over time, the sheriff's office has lost ground. And I don't think it's an intentional thing, but the facts are the facts. So, and we, the reason we backed up the overtime is because we, we have massive amounts of it. One of the problems we've always had, since I sat in that chair, is there isn't a relief factor built in. So the, and we have to have 40 hours of training a week, I mean, a year. We have vacations, sick leave, a, a, normal things that people have. But because we have posts, and a post is different than a position, it has to be covered. I mean, we are responsible for 800 lives, or 700 lives in a detention facility, so we can't leave spots vacant. And we've always had an abundance of overtime. Some people love it because it improves their, their salaries, but there's a lot of these younger folks now that feel like they're being forced to. And, and, and we are. I mean, literally, we are. You can't leave a position open because we have to staff these positions. Goes along with our patrol and all the other posts. We are, I, the only way I can describe this, we are in a bidding war. And we've talked, Maury and, and the chairman and Charlotte, all of you have to understand that if we raise our salaries up here, next week, another city will go here. I've got 17 competitors here. When we hire, we're hiring nationally. We, we are geofencing nationally. We are bringing people in from New York, Michigan, Florida, California, Illinois, all over the place. Hugely diverse a, a group of people we're hiring. So we're a regional hiring, but we get these people that live here, and they love it. We got a great, you know, all these things you're hearing with our fire guys, and, and the quality of life here is awesome. We're well-kept secret. When they move here, and we certify, and we spend millions of dollars training these, these, these young people, and they'll work for us for a year, and then the cities can hire them off. So there's not that much dedication to staying with the sheriff's office that there used to be. I mean, it used to be, we, I mean, our turnover rate, because we make it a career, is, is usually around 7, 8%, somewhere around there, 9% with our retirements. That's unheard of in law enforcement, unheard of. So we're fighting for national attraction and, and there's a part of me, I don't mind losing good cops because we're staffing Shawnee, we're staffing a lot of these cities, and I know they're good cops. When they come through our detention officer, our detention, we all started there, I started there, we know how to de-escalate, we know how to deal with mental health issues, we're experts at it. And they're better cops because of it. So we, we put these people out in, in the community, and they're, they're shining stars. And there's a part of me that doesn't like that, there's a part of me that thinks we're helping out. But a lot of people don't, also don't have a scope of the sheriff's, our footprint in Johnson County. I'll give you an example, Roland Park had a shooting the other night. My officers went out, my crime lab went, our dispatch did the dispatching, my detectives went out and investigated for them. Now, there are, there are departments that say they're fully funded. We support them everywhere in the county. Ovaland Park had a, an incident with an armed guy at Olathe, or at Blue Valley South. Our officers were, responded and helped them. Every day I get, I get letters from chiefs. We serve every civil paper, every eviction, every, I mean, our cops are all over this county. And we try to be low-key about it because that's the way the sheriff's office has always done it. We were all trained, get the job done, get out of the way, and don't make a big deal of it. But when, when people say, "Well, just go out in the country and take care of that," that's this much of what we do. And we have a big footprint. And right now, here, here's where I'm at, and I'm begging staff and, and the chairman to get this done because I'm 60 down today. I showed them yesterday. I've got 22 officers ready to go. If I lose 82 people, this county's at risk because we can't do that backup. We can't do the things that we normally need to do. I can't staff that courthouse. It's killing us right now. And the cities have been more agile, they don't have the numbers of employees we've got, I get that. But here's the problem, I can't lose another, I can't lose 82 people and still function. And I could cut a drug task force, but we've got more overdoses in this county than we've ever seen. They are going through the roof. You know, we talked about suicides. Last night, we were to suicide, two elderly people, attempted. These things are, the activity in this county is becoming urban and, and not a bedroom community. And, and I need the staff to do it, guys. I need the staff, I got to keep everybody I can get. But I am, I'm in an emergency situation. And these, these, I could tell you more stories, we'll do that in the cow. But there are a lot of issues, and my staff is hurting. I have people that what, that weep when I, they're telling me they're leaving, that they want to stay with the sheriff's office, but they can't afford to do it. And it kills me. I weep with them because I hate to lose them.
Well, Sheriff, thank you for sharing that information. And as you said, we'll have that information plus additional data to review at the committee, the whole. I should also note that under the manager's report, she has the authority to authorize 10 additional employees right now. And I think that's focused on the blue coats, and hopefully that's successful so we can bring them immediately to work. So thank you very much for those comments, and we'll look forward to receiving more information on the 15th at our committee, the whole.
Appreciate it.
And I hope that we're able to mitigate, you know, I understand completely the salary differential that's, that's facing the department. So hopefully we'll be able to mitigate that. So thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you. To add 10 more positions to, to the sheriff's department and not give them the authority to be competitive in pay, I, to me, we need to figure out how we're going to stabilize our current staffing and, and then go forward in adding officers because it's going to be, it's going to be just a revolving door out if we don't get, if we don't get adequate funds available for the sheriff's office. And this is, this, he just stated that we're at 60 vacancies, and there's 22 more that are, that are ready to leave. And it's somehow or another, we have to, to look at this budget and say, these added positions, example, the Health Department, they're not needed. This is just adding on to the, the huge buildup of the Health Department for COVID. COVID is over, it's time to roll it back. We have to look at this, we have to, we have to be, we have to use some common sense and prudence to say, yes. to say, yes, we funded the health department at these levels during COVID, but now it's over. And we don't, we don't need to have a program manager of population health and health equity. We don't, we, I mean, there's, there's, there's positions here that have a low, low rating on the Personnel Review Committee ranking. And yet, we're funding some of these positions. So why are we doing this? Why are we, why are we increasing our match in the retirement when it's, it's the upper echelon of the, of the county employees that are taking advantage of it? And the folks on the lower level, I mean, we're looking at $49,000 starting pay for the sheriff's deputies. It's, this is, I mean, this truly is a crisis.
Well, again, as I stated, at the committee of the whole, we'll have the ability to review all the information, additional information from the sheriffs. And the objective is to try to mitigate the issues involving pay. And I would say, in other departments, many times, we get grants either from the federal government or from the state government. So eliminating those positions that are grant-funded would not make any difference. So, the motion is before us. Ms. Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment. First of all, I pointed out last week, we did approve monies for the sheriff for 2022 and 2023. And I am looking forward to the committee of the whole because I think everybody up here wants to help the sheriff. And, you know, to sit up here and to cut Parks Department, talk about somebody's retirement, and Fire Department is just upsetting to me. And to me, I'm looking forward to that committee of the whole meeting, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. The motion is before us. If there's no further comments, Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, a couple of observations. The county manager noted the level of satisfaction that we generally receive for the services we provide, and she's absolutely right. One measure, though, is the value we receive for our tax dollars. And between 2022 and 2020, there was a slight increase. But that's down significantly from just five years ago when it was in the high 60s. And as I go around, I meet a lot of people who express concerns for, not that the services we provide are not adequate or even very good, but the cost of those services. And they wonder out loud, and they argue that they want us to be more in tune with the strains and stresses that they are living under, particularly in the last couple of years. And the argument that our budget is excessive, in their view, can be compelling when they cite certain projects that are not necessarily direct service delivery items. And for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer an amendment to the motion on the briefing sheet, that we increase the mill levy to two mills and use ARPA funds to offset those, that increase, to provide some, although limited, but recognizable decrease in the direct costs that our taxpayers have been bearing for the last several years.
All right. There is an amendment to the motion. Is there a second?
I want a clarification. You want to roll the mill levy back an additional two mills, right?
No, an additional mill.
Okay.
So it would be two mills.
So you want, and then, then that would take us to revenue neutral, correct?
Yeah, it should.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second that.
All right. The motion to roll the mill levy back an additional mill is before us. That's an amendment. I will oppose that because the alternative is to use ARPA funds. And when you use one-time money to make long-term decisions, then you're only postponing another year down the road, and you're probably looking at a significant increase in the mill levy. I would also offer this. There's much national projection, and the Federal Reserve made this comment the other day, that we're facing a recession. And without the reserves that we had in 2008, '09, '10, '11, we would have really been in trouble. Because those reserves allowed us to continue to deliver services with no tax increase. So for all those reasons, I will oppose the amendment. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I understand, $13.1 million will roll the mill levy back in an additional mill. Is that correct?
That's equivalent to one mill, I believe.
Okay, so...
Is that right, Robyn?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you.
So Commissioner Ashcraft is asking for a reduction of reserves, whether you want to say it's ARPA or it's the general reserves. We have $288.4 million in our, in our reserves, including the ARPA money, according to Robyn. And so we're asking 13.1. And yet, we sent $15 million out to the Panasonic project a few weeks ago, 7.5 for infrastructure and 7.5 for a fire station. And yet, we can't, we can't roll the mill levy back. I mean, I would prefer to have actual decreases in costs. And I think that it would be fairly easy to cut $13.1 million out of this budget and get it through cost reductions. But if that's not, if that's not going to happen, then at least we can roll the mill levy back. And then perhaps that will sharpen the pencil of the management next year because they wouldn't, they don't want to face increasing the mill levy that much. I mean, that's, it's unfortunate that, that it has to come to this. But, I mean, there's just, there's so many things that we could decrease. I mean, we could get $3 million out of the budget easily by decreasing the supplemental match to 2% instead of increasing it to 4%. And this is a, this is a double retirement. We have capers, and then we have the, I think it's called the 457 that we do the match. And there's, there's tons of places that we could cut. But it doesn't seem like that this board has any appetite to, to cut from this incredibly bloated budget. And when you talk about, well, if they're grants, that's still coming from the pockets of taxpayers. It doesn't, it's, whether it's federal money, or state money, or property taxes, every one of this is a, is, is an impact on our taxpayers.
If I heard correctly, we just had a discussion about increasing the sheriff's budget for 2022 and 2023?
Yes.
And we need to do that, in my opinion. So, Ms. Fast?
Yeah, I'm willing to call the question.
All right. The amendment is before us. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast?
No.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, no.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, no.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, no.
And Chairman Ilert?
For the reasons I mentioned, no. I have five votes in favor to oppose the amendment failed. The original motion is before us. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara? No. Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
No.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have five votes in favor, two opposed. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
We are at this point of the hour. It's 1:09. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to see if I could ask for the staff to clarify what monies are in the reserve account. I felt like it was being, I didn't feel like it was correct.
Yes, this, Robyn Symes of the Budget Financial Planning. One thing that I would note, of the 197, of the 197 million within there, there is 30 million for Public Safety Sales Tax III. That is dedicated. That will be going towards the last debt payment. And then also, I believe there's been discussions about that, helping to fund the courthouse build-out for the additional rooms. There's also an additional 30 million in there for the auxiliary fund. And if you remember, we put that aside for dark store impacts, and then also healthcare to ensure that we're at our secure funding level, our full funding. So once you take that out, there's other fee grant and fund restrictions and other non-spendable reserves, such as prepaid inventories, then that gets you to about 83 million. So then you would take it off of that that is restricted or designated for other uses. So that gets you down to about 130 million. And when you're at that point, then you're at about 30% of our budget, which puts us, puts us in line with the, with the bond rating. Now, again, that does not include the additional that we talked about today. But again, as we went through, I know Maury has suggested community investment pieces for that. And so that's kind of a breakdown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. The hour is 1:11 PM. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes. On the dark, on the dark store fund, are we going to be using all of those reserves? Because we, we have come to, there has been a decision, I believe.
Yes. And I'm not aware yet of that. I think that's not been...
As I recall, some of that reserve came from our health account.
Correct. So it will, it's for both purposes, and the board has to designate where that should go. For dark store, but then also, if there's any overages in healthcare, then that way we can make sure that we stabilize that fund.
So we may be able to go back and reduce the cost of the, both to the taxpayers as well as the individual employees. I'm not certain, but that money will come back. Yeah. Okay. Well, it is at about 1:15 PM. We have additional agenda items. We have a PBC meeting, and we have a request for a 10-minute executive session.
And lunch.
And lunch, somewhere in there. Consider this, we might be able to do a cold agenda next week rather than go through agenda review today. Are there any financial items that would require us to have an agenda review, do you think?
No, no.
There's, there's quite a few planning items coming forward.
There are the fire agreements. Two fire districts, so we should be fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
To do a cold.
Would you suggest we do need to put an agenda review and keep the agenda review in place?
I, we could do a cold agenda with no agenda review, if that's what your desire.
Well, so, do we want to take a break for lunch and then come back, or go ahead and complete the agenda?
Push my arm, yes.
Okay. So we're at approximately 1:15. We take 45 minutes?
Okay.
30 minutes?
Forty.
45 minutes for lunch. So we'll take a 45-minute lunch break, come back for the completion of our agenda. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
We'll reconvene at 1, at 2 PM.
2 PM.